I call the meeting to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. October fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, seven PM in the Town Council Chambers here at Town Hall. Would all who are able, please, stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, would the commissioners introduce themselves, starting on my right?
Dr. Lindstrom, alternate.
Jeremy Hayden, alternate.
Ryan Quinn, commissioner.
Pat O'Hara, chairman.
David Townsend, commissioner.
Willa Rasta, town planner.
Scott Shaw, town manager, school director, and town manager.
Our recording secretary tonight is Dave McCollum. Commissioner Porter is in excused absence. I think Commissioner Flader is not joining us this evening. I thought Commissioner Martin was joining us, maybe she'll be here in a little bit. So that takes care of item two, roll call. Item three is general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to publicly participate? That would be for items that have to do with planning and zoning but are not on tonight's agenda for public hearing. Anybody? Anybody? Going once, going twice, gone. Item four is a general appointment, which was listed as a Barnhill Road reconstruction due to the fact that it's a scenic road. That's been tabled to another date. So, we're into public hearings. Item five, special exception permit. This is a continuation. It is SCP two thousand fifteen dash eleven, file one five six two A, two eighty-five Cutler's Farm Road, Wolf Park Ball Field Constructions. Someone here for that application? Alrighty, while you folks are getting set up, we're gonna do what we gotta do. Alright. I got it somewhere. Two, five, okay. I'll just do it. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given in course with Connecticut General Statute eight dash seven D that the following applicants will be subject of a public hearing in the Town Hall Council Chambers, Seventh Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut on Thursday, July thirtieth. For this one, we are continued until tonight, which is October fifteenth. SCP two thousand fifteen dash eleven, file one five six two A dash two eighty-five Monroe, Cutler's Farm Road, Assessor Map twenty-eight, Lot nine. Application to the Town of Monroe Parks and Rec Department applicant owner for the construction of two multipurpose ball fields in areas of maintained open fields within Wolf Park, including drainage, stone wall relocation, access pathways, construction, and landscaping. Wolf Park consists of approximately one hundred and eighty-five acres within a residential and farming district, RF three. Complete detailed copy of related material associated with the above matters are on file and available for view viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. This was published on Thursday, July sixteen, two thousand fifteen, and then again, Thursday, July twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, in the Monroe Courier. Next up is the instructions for a public hearing. This will apply to both public hearings tonight. Order of hearing and application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer commission questions. The floor will then be open to those who would like to speak in favor. The floor will then be open to those who would speak in opposition. The floor will be open then to general comment or question. The floor will be open to the applicant who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. The rules of the hearing are: number one, no comment should be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the chair. Two, all questions and comments should be addressed to the chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There should be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. The commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. Four, at no time shall there be displays of emotion such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise, as critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. Five, a voter demonstration by show of hand standing by the audience or similar action will not be recognized. Six, all parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel a need to talk, please step out into the lobby. Seven, all speakers when recognized must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Eight, the chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it's not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. Nine, this is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Finally, please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. Next up, Will, any new exhibits for the record?
Exhibit nineteen, September third, two thousand fifteen, determination letter for eight twenty-four referral by the commission. Exhibit twenty, September eighteen, two thousand fifteen, letter granting twenty-eight day extension from the applicant. Exhibit twenty-one, October eighth, two thousand fifteen, response to P and Z comments by the applicant. Exhibit twenty-two, updated map sets from the applicant devised through October eighth, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number twenty-three, notice of decision of approval from the LeWanley Commission, which is commending the previous approval that was on record. That's dated October thirteenth, two thousand fifteen. And exhibit twenty-four, updated town planner comments dated October fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. That is all.
Alrighty, tonight for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, my name is Frank Cooper, Director of Parks and Recreation, Town of Monroe, Seventh Van Hill Road here in Monroe. Unfortunately, was unable to attend the last meeting, and there appear to be some concerns that the commission raised regarding our application. Since that time, we have researched those issues and have addressed them in our latest revision of the plans. So on hand tonight, we have David Sacco, we've met previously, to make a brief presentation of the changes and to answer any technical questions that you may have. So clearly, it's our wish to move this project forward and to continue to serve the rest of Monroe in the way that we feel that they best deserve. We've worked very hard on this project to try to meet and exceed any concerns that the commission may have had. You have those plans in front of you. I have Mr. Sacco, like I said, here tonight to make the presentation and to address those concerns that I believe were raised at the last meeting. So having said that, Mr. Sacco.
Alright, before you go, Mr. Sacco, Mr. McCollum, for the record, I've got Commissioner Flader here and Commissioner Martin.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sacco, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, my name is David Sacco, civil engineer with TPA two thousand and fifty, five thousand and twelve street. We submitted several devised drawings. Just going to skip the specific drawings that were revised for the specific change that were made in response to comments provided by the commission in previous hearing. We are indicating a fence along essentially the limited grid of the west field. What we're proposing to use would be a, as shown here, would be a post rail type fence, and then applied to the backside of it away from the playing field would be a black vinyl type channeling fence, so that it would be kind of intrusive in appearance, but at the same time, prevent old walls and old balls and things like that from getting past the fence that we have to be in this slope. We chose this particular side because it seemed fitting with the nature, the historic nature of the property, rather than going with something strictly a function of a channeling fence. An aesthetic choice, we're open to alternatives if that's acceptable. In addition, the pedestrian path from near the playscape through the woods across the wetlands is widened to twelve feet. The cross section was also strengthened, added rock and plastic material in order to ensure that it would be able to handle heavier traffic and also to serve as the primary construction route during the building of the west field. We did have this discussion last night with the Land and Wetland Commission. They were amenable to changing the access route to this side rather than farm view or farm view, so that's what we are going to go forward with. Section is going to be twelve feet wide. The total impact is gonna be slightly more because thickening it with side slopes results in probably five to six feet of additional impact area. So the wetland commission was okay with that. As previously noted, we are planning to install the two six inch conduits to facilitate the future installation of an irrigation system, which there is not any anticipation with having an irrigation system at this time. Then the wetland commission approved that additional impact of the wetlands. We've also revised the typical section through the stone walls to be relocated, the walls that are located in the practice field immediately west of the tennis courts that are being relocated to the west edge of that field, so that they could have a more formal appearance. The wetland commission's comment was that they don't want something too tidy. They like the idea that there are gaps in the walls that is forms they provides for some of the habitats, that they were okay with the idea that this was a meter farm style wall as opposed to something that looked more bubbly and deteriorated in nature. This is the typical section that was revised from eight feet to twelve feet in both cases, whether it's the path within the wetland section, which has a crushed stone base to allow minor surface flow to seep through in the bankment and the wetlands, or the gravel base that we use in the upper view area of the wetlands. So just to summarize, option three is going to be, once we go to construction drawings, we're going to, and then in, once we formalize all of this and find the typical drawings in the town, options one to go away. Option three will be the construction route for this project, the construction of the west field. Construction of the practice field will still be across the, within the park limits itself, down the paved path, and across the next two tennis courts to that area. We also provided, I don't have them as part of this, we provided graphics due to the short turnaround time between the getting direction to provide graphics and the next submission date that we had to hit, we didn't have time to have the surveyor go out and do a physical survey of the existing parking facilities. So unfortunately, we can't rely on publicly available imagery of the town, the telemetry that we can use for the best is not to pick the parking area, the overflow parking area. So we attempted to provide graphics to show what's available in terms of parking, what the basis was for our coming out to three hundred and forty-eight spaces. A field check of that showed that we actually have more, twenty-one additional spaces in the existing main paved parking area, so that in total, there's actually three hundred and sixty-nine spaces available. That's my oversight, but we believe that there is sufficient parking per the regulations and per the experience of the plan of the Park and Recreation Commission to support the additional facilities that are proposed, particularly given that they are intended to be seasonal in nature. They are not expected to be used during the high season for the swimming pool, so that there's a bit of an offset between the demand for the swimming pool, which is forty-two spaces, and the demand for the two fields, which is forty spaces. With that, I think we're ready to take questions.
Alrighty. Jane?
I'm not this time.
Kathy?
I just have one question, right, the second. Do you know whether there is room in the future if necessary to expand the overflow parking lot? I mean, right now, it's graded for, you know, two hundred and twenty-eight spaces, give or take, but is there an opportunity to increase that if necessary?
I, you know, I think we'd need to do some survey. Doing any modifications to that because of its location, its proximity to the wetlands, you know, simply by making it a more orderly parking area, it might be able to add spaces within the footprint that's there by properly striping it and, you know, making sure all the aisles and everything are appropriate. If the possibility of additional space, there is green space between the overflow lot and the paved parking lot, but we really need to look at.
Okay, I just wondered if you happen to know. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I think that's it for right this minute.
Commissioner Hayden?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Quinn?
Sure. You're gonna, can you repeat what you have as part of parking spaces that you've accounted for? And are they in the previous lot, or are they including the overflow lot?
The count, the physical count from the main parking lot, the paved parking lot is one hundred and forty-one spaces. And then the other lot had been based on, you know, laying nine by eighteen spaces with appropriate aisle widths on top of the footprint of that lot. We estimated two hundred and twenty-eight spaces total.
Okay. One, if you ever, did you do a site visit to the lot? I'm sure you did. To traverse from there through the main lot or around the main lot without the lighting, without the line, I can't really get an idea or even consider that. Do you have, are you anticipating presenting to us a full plan that includes any remediation work that could be done to the overflow lot? To account for the field use, I would love to accept your explanation, this is a field. I couldn't imagine you wouldn't want to use it in the summer at the same time the pool's being used. This is a grass field that the town's gonna spend a lot of money developing, and I can't imagine this application has anything to do with it being seasonally. Hasn't mentioned it previously until you've mentioned it now. So if that's the case, are you gonna change the application to show this as a seasonal field? And two, what are you gonna provide me for a parking document on the overflow lot to show that we comply with the parking spaces required?
Mr. Quinn, I think I can answer some of those questions. I think the point, I think you're missing one of the, you know, what it is intentional, what he was saying. What he was saying essentially in terms of the seasonal nature is the parking that goes on inside the paved portion of the park. It's not that the field is gonna be seasonal in itself. The fields are gonna be just like the fields that are currently there. And as you know, and as I'm sure everybody else knows, is that during the heart of the season, excuse me, we're looking at these fields to be utilized to offset the congestion, the current congestion that we have going on on the fields, as a way to alleviate some of the agronomic problems that we have. So with that being said, we anticipate that the field that's gonna be used there, or that hopefully will be built there, will be a field like in, you know, like we use at the Great Hollow. It's going to be, in the spring, it will be most likely a lacrosse field, right? And then, as we get through the lacrosse season, which usually ends on or about the middle of June, is when we start kicking in the pool at that point. So generally speaking, we're not gonna have a significant use of that field like the rest of the fields. It's not gonna be used heavily during the course of the summer. And so I think when he was talking about season, we're thinking primarily about the parking lot and the paved area, not the field itself.
And I completely empathize with everything you're saying, but you'd wanna have that. I would wanna have that from a professional. I understand that that's the idea, but sometimes the idea is not always the case. It's currently, we don't use the lower lot right now for football fields. They use the neighboring lot at the senior center because it's safer. It's closer, it's lit, and it's safer, so the...
Well, we've just been able to use that field, just been able to use that lot just this year.
Two years, last year and this year, which is fine. It serves a great purpose, but it's still not by design. So as in case in point, if we had a design on the original lower lot, that document piece that shows that it ties this parking and the overflow and that main lot, and how it ties to this new field, and how it ties to the two new fields versus the pool, or how it fits into the park entirely, and what kind of traffic flow that creates at those times, that's what I would be looking for.
Is that something that the commission would like to see, or?
I think I would like to see that. I don't know what the rest of the commissioners feel about it, but most applications would have a pretty well documented diagram on the parking and the lighting in the parking, and how we're gonna traverse from, if we're gonna use the overflow lot, and how we're gonna get people safely to and from fields. Currently, my kids are in football and they walk to the lower field in the darks. So that's a concern, yeah, I would like to see it on a plan or a schematic of a lighting scheme or the parking scheme. I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but if you were planning to do it or not, is my question.
Well, the rendering itself was to show that, you know, we clearly have the space for it, and there's a way that we can meet the required parking, and that was the intention of having a Google Earth shot and having it superimposed there. So if that's something that the commission would like to see, I'm certain we can address that.
I would, but, you know, often, these things are done by discussions, so that's all I'm questioning.
You brought it up, okay, okay.
Anything else? No, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Martin?
What are your plans for toilet facilities?
You know, we're going to be putting in portable units, you know, inside the field. We have to find, what we know, what we would like to have would be as close to the field as possible, and as we go through the access point, we're looking something right in this area right there, is where we're going to be putting the portable units. And we would have...
How many units would that be?
Well, most likely, we would probably have two, which would be handicapped accessible. So here, we could meet all the needs without having to putting, you know, multiple types. We have two handicapped accessible bathrooms, I think that should be sufficient.
Okay, you're gonna put that on the plans?
We certainly can. I mean, you know, we would have to identify what is gonna be the most practical location, which, you know, you gotta have some idea of modesty, that's where you wanna put these things, so.
That's exactly why you'd want to plan it, I would think.
And have you gotten a copy of the comments from Penny who's on the office?
I just received some a moment ago.
Okay, so I would expect that you'd be responding to those at some point in time.
We surely would be.
Okay, that's all.
Can I have a follow-up question real quick? There's no water gonna be with those porta potties, right?
Excuse me?
No water available at the porta potties?
That's not how they work.
Yeah, no, but I mean, somebody can't wash their hands.
Oh, they usually have disinfectant type.
No water fountains or anything like that? No water? Okay, that's fine.
Commissioner Quinn?
Ideally, when would the work start and stop, what time of year?
Well, we'd like to have it start, obviously, as soon as possible, but we would, I would anticipate that a July start would be preferable, July, July, you know, July into this time of year. Once you get through our really busy season, which would be the summertime, the end of July through August into September.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, just to add to that briefly, one of the concerns is obviously we wanna work the access when it's not a high seasonal flow, so that March, April, May timeframe is not a good time in terms of the construction access through the wetlands and getting that done.
Alright. I'll start by saying, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Sacco, thank you. This has come a long way with some of the things you've added, so thank you for that. And the things that you've brought up, I appreciate seeing. I still have a concern with the parking. In your narrative, you said, "We're following the regulations, we're trying to make sure we follow the regulations." I asked Mr. Sacco at the last meeting, is there a permit for the overflow lot? Do we have on record where we went through the permitting process for the lot?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Okay. And I know this is, this is something that has been there for a long, long time.
You referring to?
The field, the overflow lot.
Correct.
The park's been there for a long time, too. But we're now getting to a point where we're adding an intensifier, which is the new field and the practice field. And to not have this parking lot formalized is something we, I don't see where in the regulations I'm allowed to do that. The problem is that the Town of Monroe is subject to the same regulations as the SCP that we're gonna hear after you, and the SCPs we've heard before you. And I appreciate the overview. It does give you an idea, obviously, we know you've got spaces there. But that lot is not recorded. There's no topo, there's no landscape, there's a requirement for landscape in the lot, handicap. I see outdoor storage, which isn't allowed, and wetlands has to process this as well because, like, we all know from being on that lot, it's got an angle into the wetlands, and part of the, part of the process is to make sure that the pollutants from cars are not going into the wetlands.
And they've asked us to address that, which we're going to do.
No, and I understand that. I just, I don't, for me, I don't see a way to proceed forward unless somebody has a solution without this lot having its proper permits in order. And I'm not talking about funding and construction, I'm talking about the permits that show, these are our spots, we got a legal curb cut onto Cutler's Farm Road, you know, whoever is the traffic authority is okay with that, here's where our handicap is, et cetera, et cetera.
The only thing I can say to that service, that, you know, as you said, this parking lot has been in existence for almost thirty years. You know, the town has known about it. I didn't, I mean, none of us built it. I don't know how it got to the place that it is right now. I have no idea. All I know is that it's there, and from what I've been told, it's always been served, it's always served the community or served the park as an overflow facility. Whether or not we call it a parking lot or just an overflow lot, I don't know if that's semantics or not, but I believe there's gotta be a way to find some mutual ground here on this issue, given the fact that, you know, we are trying to serve the community here, you know, with this facility, not that we're looking to do anything to subvert the process or anything like that, but having this facility be there for as long as it has been, I think, is something that needs to be recognized, I think, you know, by the commission and, you know, by the community, you know? So we'd be willing to work, you know, with the commission to try to do the right thing, but, you know, given its longevity and given its service to the park and to the community, I think perhaps it just needs to be, that needs to be recognized, yeah.
As I said, I'm bound by the regulations. You gentlemen were quite candid in your narrative to say that we followed the wetland regulations. Now we wanna follow the zoning regulations. I can no more accept this is a parking lot than I can accept it from somebody doing a restaurant or any other development in town. The town is such... or any other development in town. The town is subject to the same regulations.
It's more of a safety issue to me. I recognize the lot. I recognize that every day we use the lot, that it's at peril. There's no lighting in the lot.
It's actually, it's a legal issue.
It is a legal issue also, but in addition to...
Well, there is light in the lot, sir.
It's not adequate or it's not...
And there's no permit.
Which is another issue, yeah.
And there's no permits for the light and what you have to understand, and what you have to understand is the whole permitting process allows your butters to have due process. So you put lights on a lot, but the neighbors didn't, weren't allowed to get their due process as to whether or not those lights are adequately protecting their use and enjoyment. And I understand that it's been there forever and that's out of my control at this point. This is an intensification of the use. You are currently the Parks and Rec Director and you are telling us, "We're not, you know, we're going to make sure that, you know, we're going to balance things." But I don't see it as a practical matter to put a condition of approval on this that only certain fields can be used at certain times, because this commission, the zoning enforcement officer, is not going to go review and watch over you folks as to what fields you're using. And if you have, if you have a fall afternoon with full-blown youth football and then we have this other field being used for soccer jamboree, lacrosse jamboree, whatever, then we run out of parking spaces and those people who need to park are now on Cutler's Farm Road or into the subdivisions. This town is in a lot of trouble. I would love it if there was a way, but I don't see a permit on this parking lot. And if there's no permit, I don't know how I can give credit for the spots. I understand what you've done with Google Earth. I get that. I mean, Scott, will I... Am I hitting the nail on the head?
Well, there's issues that isn't a standing of permit that we know, but it's been there a long time. I mean, I'm not sure why you couldn't necessarily consider as part of this application permitting parking lot there and to what degree of improvement or non-improvement you need. That's certainly up to all of you, but, I mean, why couldn't something be enveloped into this application? Now, whether, again, if the design and drawings are at that level that you need yet, that's a different matter, but couldn't it be folded in? That would be one avenue. The other is, I don't know what the other is, because they need a portion of that lot. Not all of it. They do need a portion of it to meet the number of spaces that are required when you add in those two.
So the asphalt lot has 141. How many do we need after that?
Well, if I remember correctly, the calculation for all the usage came to 302.
302.
So if you subtract the 141...
You need 161.
You would need 161 at minimum to meet, based on the calculation that they put forward on the plans for the different...
That's a huge amount. Talk about landscape, lighting. It can be incorporated into the plan, but no way I would consider it to put forth without a lot more detail as to...
Well, that's what I said. I mean, that's up to you to decide at what level and what improvements, if any, that you would need and want to see.
Well, we don't get to decide that. That's what the regulations require.
No, no. Right. If you feel the regulations require that they be articulated in more detail, then that's what they need to do. That's what you need to say. If you're comfortable with the level of detail and you could improve it, then you can approve it. But that's, again, that's a decision you often make based on the...
How much time is left on the clock for this application?
Nate, we are on borrowed time right now.
How much more we got to borrow?
The applicant has 18 days of extension to grant for the hearing, which will not take us to November 5th. It will take us to November 2nd, which is a Monday. You would have to schedule a special meeting in order to do that between now and then.
Is, is a...
The permit's a bigger...
Well, yeah.
The permit's like, how do you get around doing the permit?
You need to, you need, you need, you need, you need the drawings. Those drawings then need to go to wetlands and then wetlands needs to give the sign up.
Well, that would be the wrinkle, that if you're looking at it as getting the permit from the wetlands agency as well, which, you're right. That kind of makes the next two weeks not all that.
I mean, I know we have allowances for unpaved parking, which is what this is. And I'm not, I'm not trying to say you got to go out there and pave the thing. What I'm saying is, it needs to, it needs to be permitted. The wetlands, there needs to be bona fide drawings, just like everybody else is obligated to provide, showing the requirements of the regulations. If you want to light it, that has to be shown. The butters have to be notified, you know, because they have a right, you know, as to speak for or against whether they want, you know, a lit parking lot next door to them. And it's even more critical in a residential, it is for a business zone with a business use, because a business zone for a business use at least is in a business zone and everybody knows it. You know, this is, this is a residential zone. If Massick High School were to suddenly start having rock band music every Friday night, that would affect people for miles. You know, it's, I can't, Mr. Cooper, I can't change the regulations.
No one's asking.
Okay, so I...
Is there a way that issuance of a zoning permit could be conditioned on the application for specifically the parking facilities in order to, I'm not trying to circumvent...
No, no, keep going, because that's, that's the only other idea that might work.
I'm just trying to think of, you know, the fields, rather than repeating this whole process with that other piece, is it possible to condition the, to put a condition on granting the zoning permit to begin the construction work on the application of approval of the zoning process, which I assume...
Well, when you took it as far as you did with construction, I would say no, because the parking is a requirement that you must meet in order to be compliant for the use expansion. So if you were to go the way you said and the parking lot ultimately was not approved and you're under construction of something that needs it...
No, no, no. I'm saying we couldn't begin...
He said could, yes.
Construction until that was in place.
That's got, that's got a possibility, that's got a, well, what you need is a bona fide application for a parking lot that gets the wetlands reviewed and it has to be approved and that comes back here. And in this case, this might actually work because the two things are so separate. You have the, you have the field over here. They're applying for the field and they've got all of this other stuff. Condition of approval could be that to earn the parking...
It's a dangerous precedent. You're talking about the next 20 years, people are going to come in and say, "I can do this. I just want to start until I get," or I just, you know...
Can we take it out a little bit further? What are you saving other than having to make a short presentation about the field?
Yeah, well, that was, that was going to be the next question. This is a town presentation, so there's not much cost involved, correct? We're not charging you 650 bucks. We're just doing the notices in the paper, right?
No, we're sending things out to the butters.
Okay, so, but you're going to, but you're going to have to do that anyways on the parking lot?
Correct. Everything I mean to.
It's really your consultant time that would be...
What did you say? Well, I couldn't hear.
It's mostly the consultant time that's going to be, but you would also be doing that also for the ball fields, too, so, I mean...
I tend to, I tend to agree with what I'm hearing from Commissioner Quinn as well. We do want to not have precedence on certain things. My, my thought was trying to help you move forward, which is what you're asking us. But again, I think Will is pointing out the next application, which you're not going to, you're not going to start to work on these ball fields in November, December, January. So time is on your side. So if you, if you need a, you need a permit for the parking lot, it may be best to simply withdraw this. You've, I think you've heard, you've heard from the commission, we've brought the project forward. I think you can tell from our questions where we are with what you've presented on the fields. The parking lot's a simple parking lot. You know, it's, it's meet the requirements of the regulations. You got to come back here anyways and it would be a permit for the fields and the parking lot all at once. From what I'm hearing from this commission, you've done the fields.
You might also be able to, given that the senior center is town property, is incorporate that lot easier than you would the lower lot.
What do you mean?
It's a separate entity, but you could, given that it's town property, conjoin, you know, or have use.
For what purpose?
Well, you would alleviate the...
Oh, you're talking about for counting?
Yeah, for counting, for allocation on the other side.
Okay, but I think he's got...
We've looked into that.
But there's an issue with the senior center, too.
Well, we coordinate with the senior center. We coordinate with them relative to their planning, to their programs, so we know, you know, when...
But in official capacity, that's not approved by any zoning. That's very informal. There's no authority that you have over the parking at the senior center, nor does she have authority over parking at the park, however.
Right, but I...
If you formalized it, it couldn't be that either.
Well, no, it's not necessary from what I'm hearing. You have an overflow lot where you have an anticipated, as you said, it's been there for a while. You've got some experience with the count. It's simply getting it on the record, getting it on the land records, doing it 100% by the books. Everybody's happy. You're done with it. There's no more questions. So that's... Then the parking lot is done. And as you said, Mr. Cooper, you know, that's been there that way for a long time through people prior to you, you know, administrations prior to you, a lot of people.
For sure.
And I don't want to read between the lines, but am I, I mean, I think I'm hearing it isn't just memorializing something on papers in better format than the air. It's really looking at that lot and making it a usable parking lot, with a design that has dimensions correctly, whatever. And maybe some physical remediation.
Yeah, I mean, you've got...
I don't know what, but it, well...
If you, if you wanted to add lighting, and remember, when, when you heard the question about the porta potties and you mentioned modesty, if you wanted to plant arborvitae, so the porta potties would be behind the arborvitae, that would go on the plan. One of the questions I was going to ask is, are you going to have naming of the field and signage for the naming? There again, that goes on the plan. So when emergency services or whoever is reviewing the plans that are on the land records, "How do we get an ambulance here?" "Oh, there's the sign that indicates it's XYZ field." So they've got their landmarks and they know where to go. So it all goes on the plan. Obviously, just by the virtue of you expanding the road, you've now acknowledged the fact that ambulances, porta potties, porta potty delivery truck, no problem. If you want to put a scoreboard there 10 years from now, put it on the plan.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, but what I'm, what I'm saying is...
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. Any, any structures, anything fixed in the ground, put it on the plan. It's done. You don't have to come back and see us.
But the park is laden with, before Mr. Cooper came on, laden with things that weren't planned. Parking lot being one of them and the scoreboard being another one. The scoreboard's been there forever. It's been remediated. There's no, you know, real permit coming in.
No, I think we've got a building permit on the scoreboard.
Who owns the scoreboard?
I think they've donated into the town park program.
No, they consider, they consider the owner. So my point is, you make the application. We've got a scoreboard in place. Those kind of things are great. I'm not, you know, I'm an advocate of getting kids in that park. That's what I want. But I want to do it safely and I want to do it well thought. The pool, the other things, the playground, that's going to be the bane of your existence because of its maintenance and things are breaking down. It's a great idea and because you were a park in the town and there's a municipal referral, things kind of get pushed through in the past and they backfire in a long-term plan for the park. And I think the safest, the best approach is to do this with a lot of planning and a lot of, the application should be locked up pretty tight.
So let me ask the question. Which option, which door would you like? You got, you got option number one. You can push this to conclusion and see what kind of vote you get. Option number two is you can withdraw and we can get the, get the things we talked about done and then come back as soon as possible.
Yeah, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on this.
Yeah.
In order for us to come up with a engineered plan, you know, for that parking lot.
And again, anything else in the park that you want to put on there? If you've got anticipatory needs, if you need to put a splash pool on, on the plan, if you need to move a tennis court or lights of the tennis court.
The point being is, the only thing that we can say is no now, and including in the same application, I would recommend you do put scoreboards and you do put things back in that park. And if you get, and if you're told no, that's great. It's no, but in 10 years, when someone decides to donate something like that and you don't have to go through the permit process again or it's already an approved piece, I would put some thought into that when you come back. There's more to add than just a grass and a porta potty with some power. I would include as much as you could and I think that you'd get a lot of support.
So what say you, Mr. Cooper?
Withdraw.
All right.
Can I ask a couple of questions before you exit the floor?
Can, can we, can you guys do that on the side? Because the next application is pretty lengthy. I understand.
It's yes or no. I mean, it's just...
Go ahead.
The last time you were here, you discussed the access from Parkview. What vehicles were going to...
They said they're not going to use it.
At all, at all, at all. I just want to make sure I heard that for the record. All construction vehicles will now come through the 12-foot wide, okay. That's fine.
That will be, the base of that would be built to a level that allows construction traffic.
That's fine.
Construction is done. It will pave it on the way out.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. Thank you. That's it.
And I just had one question or clarification. When they put together the plan for the parking lot, is your expectation that it will not be paved or do you want to see it paved or do you want to see a combination?
I'm not telling, I'm not, I'm not telling anybody what to do, pervious, impervious, whatever you want to do. Maybe they want to pave part of it. You guys figure that out.
Okay, so that's basically, I'm just looking for some...
The regulations don't allow us to demand a paved parking lot, do we, with respect to the...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you weren't requiring lots. I want to make sure the effort that they put in goes...
Well, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a town project. Let's see what makes sense for the powers that be who work this out on the town level. You guys going to need some kind of letter from?
We're going to...
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, folks. That takes care of 285 Cutler's Farm Road. Next up is going to be SEP 2015-17. File 1568455 Main Street and 10 Hattertown Road, proposed convenience store and gas station with canopy, Cumberland Farms. I'd ask Mrs. Martin if she could read that. Do you need me to read it? Your voice, go. Notice hereby given in accordance with CGS 8-7D, that the following application will be subject of a public hearing in the Town Hall, Council Chamber, 7 Van Hoel Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, October 15, 2015, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter to hear testimony, public input, and receive correspondence concerning the following. Certificate of Approval for Gasoline Station and Special Exception Permit, followed by, and, or however you want to do it, SEP 2015-17, file number 1568A. 455 Main Street, Assessor MAP 46, Lot 7, and 10 Hattertown Road, Assessor MAP 45, Lot 39. Application of Cumberland Farms Incorporated, applicant Joseph P. Williams Esquire, Shipman and Goodwin LLP, representative. Four, one, certificate of approval of the location of a gasoline station with 12 pump stations under a canopy structure for Connecticut, General Statute 14-321, and zoning 9.1.3F and 2, special exception permit for the gasoline station and associated 4,738 square foot retail convenience store for property consisting of approximately 1.88 acres with a business district to B2, including the consolidation, merger of the two lots into a single fee simple lot. Property owner, 455 Main Street, L...
........................................................................
Which notice was published, you know, today? Exhibit number one, SCP application by the applicant, August 12, 2015. Exhibit number two, project narrative and address list by the applicant, August 12, 2015. Exhibit number three, traffic impact and access study by the applicant, August 12, 2015. Exhibit number four, storm water management report by the applicant, dated through August 2015. Exhibit number five, plans, 27 sheet plan set by the applicant, planned through August 12, 2015. Exhibit number two, flash drives of application info, Shipman and Goodwin LLP, received April 12, 2015. Exhibit number seven, copy of notification of application to Department of Public Health and Aquarium Water Company, August 17, 2015. Exhibit eight, Monroe Health Department comments, September 11, 2015. Exhibit number nine, Town Planner comments, September 11, 2015. Exhibit number 10, Building Inspector comments, September 2, 2015. Exhibit 11, Town Engineer comments, September 14, 2015. Exhibit 12, Public comments, Police comments, September 16, 2015. Exhibit 13, Fire Marshal comments, September 16, 2015. Exhibit 14, Response to Town Planner comments by the applicant, October 7, 2015. Exhibit 15, Response to Lighting Review comments by the applicant, October 7, 2015. Exhibit 16, Response to ART comments by the applicant, October 7, 2015. Exhibit 17, Response to Town Engineer comments, supplemental drainage plan by the applicant, October 5, 2015. Exhibit 18, 40 sheet map set by the applicant, revised through October 7, 2015. Exhibit 19, ARB comments, September 25, 2015. Exhibit 20, Town Planner updated comments, October 15, 2015. Exhibit 21, Town Engineer comments, revised through October 15, 2015.
I think we got Exhibit 22, which is a handout we just received from the applicant.
Okay.
How's that, Will?
Did you guys bring a digital set of plans?
Tonight, right now?
Did you just have the hard copies here?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I wish I had known. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commission members. I'm Joe Williams with Shipman and Goodwin. You've just heard my name listed, saw some stuff from me, but we had no idea that you had such a nice PowerPoint capability here. We had heard that, but we forgot. So, no, we didn't bring anything to you that way. It's gonna be a low-tech presentation, the old-fashioned way. I think we have stuff on boards that'll be clear enough for all of you to see, and then you have handouts of several of the things, so...
Would the original set help at all? I know it's not exactly the same as what you have, but do you have your digital versions from the original set?
I don't know. It'd probably be better to work off these, because we have colored versions of the updated revised plans that's before you. If there's anything anybody can't see, just tell us, please. We'd be happy to bring it closer, or whatever it is we can do, and we'll certainly send in an electronic copy of the revised version.
Could I just make a suggestion that perhaps we pull it back a little bit so the audience could see?
Sure. Thank you.
Well, actually, hold on. How close is the electronic copy we have to what you're gonna be talking about tonight?
Pretty close.
Why don't we get something up on the screen? That way the audience can kind of follow along. Because whatever you're talking to us about, my eyes are not getting younger.
Whatever you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do. So, just pick something.
Stick it in the...
You have it up.
Where the other one is?
Take out the one that's there, put that in, 'cause the other port, it doesn't work well.
You don't need to shut it off, I can just take it.
Or else there might be a port. It's okay. No, it's gonna be coming out of the second one there.
I mean, it needs to be reinstalled anyways.
No, it's gotta go on the second. Okay, 'cause one of them doesn't boot up.
I can give you some. I'm just gonna hand this in a minute anyway. Sorry, we could...
Mr. Williams, what county are you in again?
Shipman and Goodwin.
All righty. That'll help the audience follow along. Actually, Attorney Williams, this is the updated projector. This is the super-duper model.
It's very nice, it's impressive. I don't see a lot of towns that have that, so...
Come join us for the Super Bowl, we'll be watching it on the wall.
Is that open to the public?
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was a great suggestion, and of course, if we come back another time, we'll have the updated stuff on there in color.
Awesome.
And like I said, if there's anything that's, you know, not visible to the board, we can certainly send it around, and you have some reduced-size versions that we've handed in of several to the board, so hopefully that'll make it easier to see as well. That includes, I think, the rendering that's up on the easel right now that we'll talk about in a moment. I think they have that in the... Just the site plans? Okay, you have the site plans. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, turn Joe Williams, Shipman and Goodwin, 265 Church Street in New Haven. With me right here is Mark Rocky, our project engineer from VHB. Also here this evening in the audience are Peter Yesky, the project manager from First Hartford Realty Corporation, which is the preferred developer for Cumberland Farms sites here in Connecticut, as well as Mike Lukaszewski, the regional sales manager for Cumberland Farms for this area of the state. And if any questions come up about the way the store or the gas operation would operate, Mike is here to answer those questions, otherwise you'll hear from me and Mark here this evening. I'm proud to present these applications to you on behalf of Cumberland Farms. Cumberland Farms is still a family-owned business based in Framingham, Massachusetts. It owns all the stores that they operate, there are no franchises, and they care deeply about being a good neighbor and a productive presence in all the towns in which they operate. And they care very much about designing and maintaining safe and attractive sites, and they have a very successful track record of building and operating successful facilities, just like the one that we're proposing here, all throughout Connecticut and New England. They've been very well received, and the company's excited about the opportunity to bring such a presence to the town of Monroe. After I give an overview, then I'll turn it over to Mark. I'll turn it over to Mark to do the engineering presentation. And I just submitted, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the notice that we mailed out and the green cards and envelopes and things that we received back, for your records.
Mark, that is exhibit 23.
Thank you very much.
The site that we're talking about, 455 Main Street, of course, Connecticut Route 25 and 10 Hattertown Road, they're shown on the existing conditions board there that's underneath the easel, and there in your packet. It's about 1.9 acres combined. Cumberland Farms has a lease for both of those parcels with the current property owner. As you probably know, because I'm sure the commission is familiar with the area, the site is, thank you, site's currently vacant. It was previously developed with an auto body repair and service facility until 2010, and it was subsequently demolished, and as I said, it now sits vacant. The property's in the business 2 zone, or B2, in which a retail store is permitted by right, and a gas-fueling operation is permitted by special permit. And of course, we have also requested location approval for the sale of gasoline under your regulations and state statute. The site is surrounded on three sides by commercial uses. Of course, it's on a busy commercial corridor, Route 25, and on three sides it has the Clock Tower Shopping Center, has the Monroe Muffler Service Shop immediately south of the site adjacent to our site, and across the street there are things like the Hill and Dale Auto Service Facility and an Exxon Gas Station. And then there are residences behind the site across Hattertown Road, to which I think we'll show you. We've been very sensitive in the design of the site, and in particular in the screening and the buffering of the site. Our proposal is to develop a retail convenience store building of about 4,700 square feet, six gas pumps with a canopy overhead, install two 20,000-gallon underground storage tanks, stormwater systems, septic systems, sidewalks, parking, landscaping, signage, and lighting. And we'll touch on all those things tonight. Mark here will explain in a moment in detail the site layout and the driveways and the parking, the extensive, well-developed rain garden system we're proposing for stormwater management, the extensive landscaping we're proposing around the building and the site, and other aspects of the engineering details. And Mark will also summarize our traffic study. I'll give a few details about the proposed building architecture in a moment. We have, as is the practice, we've received considerable input from town staff, and we've already incorporated and made a number of improvements as a result, and those are reflected in the revised set of plans and memoranda that you received on October 7th in response to the application review team. We submitted in August, so you should have in the original package a narrative from me, all the application forms, complete set of plans, a stormwater management report, and a traffic study. And I would note, we did that after we had met with staff and incorporated some of their comments, so some of the things that were even in the original set weren't called out, but were done in response to staff. And then in response to the ART, on October 7th, we gave you a more extensive narrative by me explaining how our proposal complies with all applicable regulations for special permit and location approval of selling gasoline. We gave you a memo and attachments from Mr. Rocky responding to staff comments. We gave you, by Mr. Rocky again, a supplement to his stormwater management report responding to comments from Town Engineer, a memo from Red Leonard Associates about the site lighting.
I'm sorry. I was just seeing through all the plans.
And an expanded plan set, which required a number of additional sheets in response to comments we got from town staff. Now, I'm not referring to that right now, but I'm just gonna refer to the rendered plan that we have there on the easel. That is the rendering of what the site and the building architecture will look like on this site, and it's something that Cumberland Farms does on every one of its sites with people who have tremendous expertise in showing you with great accuracy what it will look like, because it takes photos of the existing site and places the building and the site improvements on it. And we, of course, also have in the plan sets several sheets that have more detailed building architectural elevations. But as I described in my initial narrative letter, this is the type of building that Cumberland Farms has proposed and built successfully all over Connecticut and New England. It's intentionally a colonial farmhouse style of architecture. You can see that it has a roof with colonial, cobblestone gray architectural roof shingles, and an A-frame roof, and it has dormered windows. You don't see anything behind the windows, they're blacked out, but it's a dormered window effect for architectural interest. There are columns, there is herringbone cream-colored vinyl siding, and cultured stone veneer around the base of the building, the base of the columns for the canopy, and around the base, can't see it in the rendering, but around the base of the canopy sign that we're proposing. So those are some of the architectural elements. And if you want us to see it, we can pass that around. It's pretty heavy, 'cause it actually has some of the cultured stone on it, but you're welcome to see that if any of the commissioners would like to see that. We had a very nice meeting with the Architectural Review Board for the town of Monroe. I think it's fair to say they were complimentary of the design. They considered a number of ideas, but only asked for two changes. First, that we increase the height of the white vinyl fence in the rear of the building that shields the mechanicals on the second story. You can't see it in that rendering, but they're on the elevations for the rear of the building. They asked us to increase the height and reduce the spacing of the rails so that it would screen the mechanicals a little bit more. And second, they asked us on the front window of the store to add some 3-over-3 mullions to the glass window in the front there. You also do not see that on that rendering, just because they were concerned about reducing the amount of decals that might be put inside the glass for advertising purposes. And you have the ARBs letter of September 25, 2015, making those two recommendations. We've agreed to both, and they're shown on the revised plan sheet that we submitted on October 7th. So you have an architectural elevation that shows the mullions, and you have one that shows the rear of the building with the change to the fence that the ARB requested. So, in summary, we believe the plan as amended complies with all of your applicable zoning regulations. There's no relief required, we haven't asked for any waivers or variances of any kind. We believe it's an excellent site for the proposed use, it's well-designed, it's safe, it will be safe and attractive, and we've provided adequate screening and buffering. It will not cause a traffic hazard or any adverse impact on neighboring properties. In fact, we think it'll be complimentary to the commercial zone, and hopefully promote similar redevelopment upgrades on nearby properties. And so we respectfully submit, subject to everything we tell you tonight, that we have satisfied all of your special permit criteria and for location approval, and we will respectfully request your approval. That's my overview. Unless you have any questions for me, I'll turn to Mark to get into the site details.
Keep on going.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mark Rocky, Senior Engineer with VHB, responsible for the site design of this particular project. I must say, I am proud of this site design. We incorporated a number of very good LIT stormwater treatment measures, a number of really beneficial site features that we've incorporated into the site. And it's kind of a little atypical than even a standard retail building, which I'll describe in a minute. The first page you have in your packet, that's the existing conditions. You can see a larger one down below. Again, I apologize, it's down below. The first exhibit is, again, existing site conditions. As Joe mentioned, it's a 1.9 acre site, currently demolished. It's really just a lot of old growth vegetation, certain, the tremendous areas left over from the previous development. As Joe mentioned, located in the B2 zone, and really, really just ready for a new development. So, for the proposed site plans, it's the second page in your packet now, which reflects the top board over on my left here. It's similar to the old submitted plan. Again, we did submit revised site plans. The second page you have in your package does reflect the revised site plans, and I'll go through a number of iterations of the upgrades. So as Joe mentioned, it's a 4,700-square-foot retail building, convenience store retail with gasoline station use. There are six pump stations located in the center of the site, two dispensers per pump for a total of 12 dispensers. The underground fuel tanks located just to the right of the dispensers. Those are two 20,000-gallon underground storage tanks, they're fiberglass reinforced, double-walled, vastly superior system, top-of-the-line system. You know, Cumberland Farms wants to present a very promising and a very effective holding tank right out of the bat. So like I said, it's a state-of-the-art system for the underground fueling storage. In terms of parking on the site, we currently have 24 proposed parking spaces on the site. We believe this is in zoning compliance. 27 are actually required by code. However, there is a zoning regulation that does state the commission has the right to allow 30% shared parking, which we do take advantage of. shared parking, which we do take advantage of. We actually only request a share of twelve percent, which is twelve and a half percent, which is three parking spaces. Those three parking spaces are for the gas station use. Again, twenty-seven total required, twenty-four provided. Those three, like I said, are the exception of the three shared uses. You'll notice one difference between the old plan and the new plan you have right here. There are additional parking spaces located directly adjacent to the underground fuel tanks. We were able to make up a couple of spaces there and kind of clean up the site a little bit, able to accommodate some of the town staff comments. Loading zone is provided on the right-hand side of the site. Dumpsters are also located on the right-hand side of the site. Dumpsters are enclosed, very good screening, very sturdy plastic composite fencing enclosure for the dumpster. And as Joe iterated, the site is fully zoning compliant in terms of all setbacks and coverage requirements. For proposed site access, there is one big difference between the old plan you have on the screen and the new plan you have in front of you, most notably if I can be in front of a mouse here. This particular driveway, it's the northern driveway on Main Street. We have understood town's concerns, staff concerns that obviously there is a queuing issue on Main Street. Our traffic board has acknowledged that. And one particular item of concern was taking lefts out of the site, a particular item that we would like to address. And in the updated plan you have in front of you, it does not show one exit lane as I'm hovering over the old plan. It actually shows two exit lanes, one for a dedicated left-out, one for a dedicated right-out. Should somebody choose to take a right-out at that location, they don't need to wait for anybody trying to take a left-out. So we respectfully heard town staff comments, heard the concerns, accommodated, and presented with, again, a revised site driveway for the northern driveway. So the driveway here is the proposed right-in, right-out. The right-out is absolutely crucial for our large fuel tanker delivery route. The truck will enter the northernly driveway. It must always unload on the passenger side. I actually have a truck turn movement plan. If anybody would like to see that in a minute. But the truck will unload fuel and fuel tanks on the passenger side, circumvent the site in a counterclockwise movement, and exit this right-out only curb cut here. And the last curb cut on the site to the far west is Hattertown Road up at the top of the page here. That particular curb cut, again, listening to staff comments, was widened to thirty feet. This older plan is twenty-four feet. We heard town staff comments, widened it to thirty feet to basically allow larger pedestrian vehicles, smaller box trucks, to enter that site without encroaching in any double yellow lines. And as Joe mentioned, the Hattertown Road is one-way in this, I'll just say, northernly direction. It's about northwest, northernly direction. So nobody can exit a left turn because of the natural direction of the road. They can only do right-ins and right-outs. For landscaping for the site, the current exhibit you have in front of you is the latest landscape plan. It differs slightly from the old plan. Essentially keeps some of the same features. What I'm excited about, and what we really don't get a chance to because of site, limited access, but this site is fantastic because we have the room, we have the soils to do a number of excellent LID low-impact design measures for stormwater management and stormwater quality. We're not proposing a generic underground structural man-made system. We have the room, green space for rain garden features. And similar to the handout in front of you, rain garden feature on the north here, rain garden feature on the middle, and two along the south here and here. Now, these systems are, in my opinion, vastly superior than any kind of standard underground detention. They have a number of exceptional plantings for nutrient uptake, aluminum removal. There is an engineered soil medium, a few feet thick, directly at the base of the rain gardens, which, again, great for water quality treatment, groundwater recharge. So the fact that we can do this for a gas station site and then convert in a convenience store use, it's a great benefit. It's a fantastic landscape plan. And I don't mean to sound overexceeded, but it's a great contribution to the community that we can actually preserve and reduce the purpose area and preserve a number of green space. We did hear comments from town staff. They wanted an addition of landscape trees between ornamental shade trees, evergreen trees throughout the site. So if you look in detail on your handout, there are a number of additional shade trees along the front. A number of ornamental trees and shade trees along the side. There are actually a significant amount more pollines directly in the rain garden features now and on the side embanked other rain garden features to help with erosion, help with any trash litter, and basically a significant amount more screening. Apologize, I'm jumping around here, but a significant amount more screening in the back here, if you'll notice on your plans. So, again, we've heard town comments. We tried to incorporate and come to a very good compromise, the best we can, and very proud to show you the site plan. Another comment of great concern from the town, we understand, was the lack of plantings in front of the building with the old design. And to know full of our own, we only had a limited amount of plantings in front of the building. And that was really due to Cumberland Farms, what Cumberland Farms left to have are ten-foot-wide parking spaces. Town requirement is a nine-foot minimum. Cumberland Farms just liked ten feet wide because it's more of a comfort for driving. We heard staff comments. We reduced the parking space width to nine feet wide, which actually gained us a lot more room to add landscaping in the front of the building here. You'll notice on your plan, directly on the right-hand side of the sheet where I'm hovering over, we have a nice landscape on. And over here now, proposed, directly at this side door on the left-hand side of the building, we have a five-foot-by-twelve-foot planter directly on the side of the building proposed. And in lieu of excessive amount of sidewalk directly next to the outdoor seating on the left, again, another planter. So we have attempted to, again, reduce the purpose area, make the necessary improvements for landscaping, added a significant amount more landscaping to the site, which we feel, again, is a great benefit after kind of discussing with town comments. Just another couple of points. I've skipped on water quality treatment measures. As I mentioned, there's a number of rain gardens on the site. In case of any, let's say, oil spills, fuel spills at his gas station, things happen. Around each dual pump I leave here, you'll see these tripled-up, quadrupled-up contour lines. Those are the V-notch grooves. They're the first line of defense in case any drops, a significant defense against any drops. If anything should flow past these V-notch grooves, nothing can leave the site without dropping into the catch basin first. No stormwater or again, any oils or anything can leave the site without dropping to the catch basin. All catch basins are designed as best management practices with deep sumps and hooded outlets for oil capture. And, again, with each of the four rain gardens around the site, each rain garden has its own dedicated hydrant in a water quality unit, which are extremely effective at removing any more oils or fuel or sediment from runoff. So it's a very redundant system, but, again, protection is needed. This is a high flue load site. So we're doing the best we can. And again, I'm actually very proud of this particular design. I've designed sites with retail buildings less than this. So it's a good advantage to the community that we can actually accommodate this type of design. A few more points to touch upon. Site signage, pylon sign, it's a freestanding sign located right at the front of the site. We had first submitted a signage package that was non-zoning compliant to our error after meetings with town staff. We understand we needed to do some revision for signage, and we have done so. First off, on top of the building, there is only one sign, which is allowed by code, which is provided on the building. There are no signs on the canopy. No signs are allowed, but no signs are proposed on the canopy. There is no, what I'll call, logo signage on the pumps themselves. I would say logo as in Cumberland Farms logo on the pump, which, again, not allowed, so we're not trying to propose that. There is some ADA handicap signage, federal state regulations, signers that does need to be on the homes. And lastly, bringing it back to the pylon sign, we do feel we have now a zoning compliant sign. It is provided in the plan set we submitted as sheet thirteen. I just have a color rendering of the sign. It is a freestanding sign, maximum height fifteen feet high. We understand that is allowed by code. Twenty feet is the maximum, and fifteen feet. The sign area itself is zoning compliant at thirty, just over thirty-one square feet. I believe thirty-two is allowed by code. And this particular sign, I feel, is very handsome. It's very aesthetically pleasing. I don't think I've ever seen a gas station, convenience store use with a cobblestone planter bed in the bottom. I personally think Cumberland Farms is having a great touch with that. And the cultured stone veneer columns, again, we feel is another excellent touch to add to the aesthetics to the site. Just to briefly talk about site lighting. We heard town staff. We tried to come up with a very good compromise for site lighting. The first iteration of the site plans only showed a very flat site lighting fixture. We have since revised and came with what we feel like is a much better compromise. It's going to be more of an acorn-style feature. They're actually currently proposed along the outdoor tables, these more decorative features. So we heard staff comments, and we revised site lighting and incorporated these more decorative features throughout the entire site. So, again, just another welcome upgrade to this site design. And we understand we had missed zoning code of point-two-five-foot handle limitation, site lighting level at the property line. The revised plan has matched that. So, besides a number of detail revisions after hearing town staff comments, moving structures out of setbacks, I believe that'd be a good overview of the proposed plans.
Just make reference to this. If we could show them this and kind of tell what we see on here.
From Hattertown. So, this second rendering Joe has, hopefully it's not too far. If it's too small and anybody would like to see it closer, please feel free to ask. But this is a second rendering from Hattertown Road. The view is approximately, if you come up on a large screen, I'd say about, right about here, looking directly into the site. And what you'll notice is just a significant amount of landscaping, a premium for the site. Sidewalk access directly to Hattertown Road, another premium that Cumberland Farms wants to show that we are willing to compromise and make the best product possible. You can see the outdoor seating, the green triangles, those are the outdoor umbrellas for the seating outside. With the landscape planter, with the cultured stone veneer directly in front of that, again, another upgrade for this site. It's not a cookie cutter site. We're really trying to show that we have a number of good upgrades for the town.
And Mr. Chairman, the only other thing we wanted to do is talk a little bit about a memo we received, well, two memos, actually. We just received this evening, one got by email right before we left to come down here from Mr. Gresta, and then we got another one from Mr. Schatzler when we got here. And a lot of the things in the prior set of comments have been addressed. Some of them we haven't reached full agreement on. And I think it's going to be, I believe it is necessary, and it will be helpful to you all and to us to have some discussion with the commission about some of those items tonight because I don't want to, you know, have to unnecessarily drag this out to a third hearing by coming back to the next hearing with responses, hearing your input, and then figuring out if we need to do more. It'd be nice to hear and to discuss some of the compliance and other, some of the preferences that are recommended in here. It'd be good to talk to the commission about that tonight. We can either do it now, or you can ask us questions, or take public input. I'll take whatever order you want. Just so that you know we would like to try to do that tonight if we can.
Excellent. So you already answered my first question. We're going to have a second night for the hearing. Yes?
I would say there's a good chance of that unless we go through all the comments and you tell us that we don't need to say anything else.
Okay. And I understand that. I like to put that out there for the commissioners because there's a lot of material, and if folks have a good idea there's going to be a second night, they're a little bit more relaxed. So everybody's got that on their radar. There's probably a second night. Second, what we generally do is you guys do your presentation, and then we ask you questions. If you have some things you'd like our feedback directly on, we can take those on a one-by-one, and we can go down the line and see if folks have input for you. Especially, that is good to do if you are coming back. So.
Sure.
Do you want to start with your list of what-ifs?
I'm happy to. And I'll do whatever is your preference. If there are things the commissioners want to ask first on what we just presented, then maybe that's better. But I defer to what your preferences are.
Why don't we have the commissioners ask you questions first? That'll give you an idea where people are.
That's a good idea.
Awesome. All right. So we'll go start with the commission. Commissioner Flader?
Oh, just a couple of things. What is the lifespan of those underground tanks? And how are they, you know, maintained?
They are a thirty-year warranty lifespan. And these particular tanks, like I said, double-wall fiberglass reinforced, superior system, top-of-the-line. The double wall, the interior of the wall are filled with a brine assault solution. And there's a number of sensors within the interior wall, the brine-filled area and the outer wall, which has an exceptional alarm system. If there's a breach in the interior wall, alarms go off in the building, and it is immediately rectified. Any leaks into the outer wall is immediately fixed. Cumberland Farms is not in the business of losing product. They want to obviously work with top-of-the-line equipment to preserve their product and preserve their business. So it is a very, very adequate, like I said, double-wall fiberglass reinforced system for the tanks.
What is the anticipation of how many fills they're going to need, you know, per week or whatnot when trailer trucks coming in there filling?
I think the estimate for a facility like this is generally in the two to four deliveries per week range. See if anybody's going to correct me on that. I think that's about correct. And that's generally what we say on a site like this, and I think that this is right within that average.
Hours of operation?
Twenty-four hours.
And the building itself, you mentioned that there's basically fake dormers. Is it a second floor? Is it used for storage? Is it?
It's not a second floor that's used. There's nothing up there.
It's just an open area on ground floor.
Correct.
Just a high ceiling.
Right.
That's it for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Lindstrom?
Yes, I have several questions. I happen to be a resident of Stepney. I travel Hattertown Road and Main Street almost every single day. And I had, my concerns are with the traffic entrance and exit primarily. Did you explore or would you consider incorporating your driveways in either Clock Tower Square or with Monroe Muffler?
Yes, we did. And I think, Mark, the designer can probably speak in a little more detail to what we looked at on that. But yes, we did. That was brought up from our first meetings with the town.
So, in terms of the traffic, we did submit a traffic study. And what we found out is, which I'm sure everybody knows, the traffic on Main Street is not the best situation. But what we've also found out is that between five new developments being proposed in the area within the next year, with or without this Cumberland Farms, the level of service still remains in this kind of detrimental state. So whether Cumberland Farms is there or not, Cumberland Farms does not exacerbate or add to the traffic situation. We've tried to do the best we can with the site driveways, providing appropriate driveway access. And to that end, with the connection to the Clock Tower shops, the grading, I guess it's twofold. Number one, this drainage feature would essentially go away. The main point of access for probability would probably be right through here. And the grading, I believe it's about a ten-foot grade difference. Be extremely difficult to try to get a driveway up to there. Obviously, anything's possible, but it's not the most appropriate option. And it does take away from the nice stormwater management features.
And how about on the Monroe Muffler side?
Again, I would contribute that to taking away, adding a purpose area, taking it away from the nice landscape features. And it kind of starts to influence Monroe Muffler to unnecessarily park on our site, which it's not the best situation to be a part of.
And you are aware that there's a new shopping center that we recently approved, sort of almost across the street?
Right. Yep.
Okay. Is there room, if there are cars parked, oh, not parked, fueling at two stations? Can a third car go through the middle?
Right. The distance between the pumps. See the distance between the pumps here, which did not change on your updated plans? It's thirty-five feet between pumps. Typically, I wouldn't go below eleven feet for an actual length. Typically, we, I wouldn't go below 11 feet for an actual lane. Let's say we have three lanes. That would be 33 feet wide. So to answer your question, if there is a truck or a car at each of the pumps, there would be over 11 feet to pass through the middle.
Yeah, depending on how close they are. Do you propose, I don't know what else to call it, but other than extra-long or long hoses so that no matter what direction, my gas tank is on whatever side of my car, I can pull into any pump and fill it up?
I apologize, that is kind of outside my realm of expertise.
We don't generally do that when we didn't propose that here. It's not impossible, but generally they don't see the need for it and haven't proposed it.
As a consumer, I see the need, but that's probably the only one in the room that has run into that problem. Okay, and...
I'm sorry, excuse me. Can I ask Mr. Lukaszewski, he's the regional sales manager, he knows more about this than me. He might be able to give you a little better information.
Good evening, Mike Lukaszewski, went on a crossing boulevard in Framingham, Massachusetts with Cumberland Farms. The reason why we do not implement the pull cord on the gasoline hoses is because we don't have a traffic pattern that only goes one way, like you would see in the big box stores, a BJ's or Sam's Club, where they're directing traffic all one-way into neighboring parking lots. They have those hoses so you can reach them across the cars. In this particular site with the easy flow of traffic, you do not need those. It could be an option if requested, but we generally do not put those in.
Would you consider, or did you consider having the traffic going in one direction? So that everybody enters the same way? And I know that you don't, but I mean, would you consider that?
Right, we did. That was actually a town staff comment from a town planner previously. And a suggestion was to rotate, if you can imagine, rotate the fueling operations 45 degrees.
So they're on an angle?
Right, so they would be on an angle. I can't really mouse this very well, but 45 degrees would have been the preferred from, or the preferred request, I'll say, not preferred Commonwealth. So in the packet, in the memo packet addressed to Patrick O'Hara, we incorporated three conceptual designs that showed what happens when we start to turn the pumps at a 45-degree angle. What happens is when you turn at 45 degrees, if you choose to maintain this 35-foot separation, the entire canopy and pump areas, pump area, starts to head left in an extreme direction, almost encompassing all of this nice green space. And to then try to circumvent a drive-al around that, it's impractical. Then I said to myself, well, if we don't need 35 feet, how well can we go? Commonwealth Farms' minimum is 27 feet. They don't choose to go below 27, it's just a nightmare for getting cars in there. So we chose to go 27. And again, it had still elongated, the pump canopy, the pump pad, everything. And if anybody had tried to circumvent the site, let's say that this was the one-way in, and if anybody wanted to, if all the pumps were filled up and wanted to run all the way over to this location, if you can imagine before you try to repump, trying to take a left out of here just wouldn't work. And what we feel is that it starts to take away from the green space in the low-end back design, we're really trying to minimize impurvance. And we said, well, let's take it one step further. If these are all 27 feet, let's reduce this drive-out over here, start pushing everything to the right to actually accommodate setback, accommodate the existing drive-outs. What happens is, again, the same thing, there's just inadequate room to take a left trying to come down here, then we say, well, why don't you take a right, come back around this way? That defeats the one-way pattern, and then what happens is this drive-out over here just starts to get too narrow. And if a tanker is sitting there, there's not room for two-way traffic around. So this orientation really does maximize reducing impurvance area, accommodating setbacks, and really maximizing our green space. So we did look into those options, and they're provided in the documentation that was submitted, so we would respectfully continue with the current system.
Let me make some clarifications, as it was represented, coming from commentary by me. One, I didn't recommend any specific degree of angle. I didn't recommend it to be one-way. What I was recommending, or what I was suggesting, that what we looked at, was that the encouragement of a one-directional flow, but not inhibit the one direction, to just one direction. We weren't going to eliminate the two-way aisles around the pumps in any way. I do agree that this is more efficient, more maximization of space, the way it's angled. The reason I was looking for, looking at evaluation of those things was really twofold. One was to minimize the number of curb cuts down to one, which I still think you can achieve even with this design. It was really all, I think, is needed to this site. And the second was trying to reduce the conflict of the pump islands and the parking spaces that are desired by the applicant in front of the building, which I think presents other problems, because you have parking spaces that are backing out and are in conflict with pump island spaces that are going forward. And to me, that's the bigger issue that I was really after. And I do agree that in some of the angle, you are elongating it out, and this site obviously has a width issue or limitation, as you said. So it was a little different than exactly what I think what the applicant might have heard what I was saying.
All right, thank you. All right. As I said before, I travel on Hattertown Road all the time. It's a country road, but it's almost like a country lane. It's narrow, it's hilly. My concern would be about the exit, traffic exiting and also entering Hattertown Road to the gas station. People entering, maybe it's not so significant, but people exiting, traveling down Hattertown Road, I see where people will be doing that. And using that as an opportunity to go down to Stanley Road and kind of going around the block to minimize all the traffic headaches that they're going to face. It's not that long, it's not that far, rather than coming out onto Main Street where there's no traffic light. I would like to hear your rationale for why you even think you need to have an exit and entrance on Hattertown Road, which also happens to be primarily a residential area right across the street.
So we, again, had submitted a traffic study. There are not significant trafficking, there is predictably some not significant ingress emigrers out of Hattertown Road. And it's really for convenience, really for anybody who lives in the area or chooses to possibly miss the site coming from Main Street, can take a turn and come back up and around to utilize that code.
And what about the exiting? Now, I see that that could be a real problem. Your trucks won't exit there.
No, no, no. No trucks are exiting now.
But I can see where, you know, there's a potential for the people on Stanley Road and Hattertown Road to have a large volume of cars using that exit. That's a real concern for me.
No, it's understandable.
And then I think the only other thing, well, I'm kind of reading all my notes here and making sure I'm covering everything. The sign, I feel, is totally incompatible with anything else that's on Main Street.
The freestanding?
The freestanding sign, that would be on, on Main Street. It's overwhelmingly tall in relation to whatever else is there, and that is not what we are trying to achieve as far as new signage that we're recommending. So that's it for me for right now.
Commissioner Hayden?
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn?
Can you just review with me the, one, I'd like to compliment you all on the work. It's a very nice application and very easy to get through, concise and very well detailed. Thank you. On the little fuzzy under, three shared spaces, could you go through that with me in more detail?
So, the way we had calculated that was, five per thousand, I believe, is a requirement for retail. Doing the calculation for the 47, 138 square-foot building, that equals 24 spaces required for retail. For a gas station use, it is required three spaces plus, I believe it's one per bay, but we don't have bays, that's for repair and things like that. So 24 for retail, convenience store, three for gas station. That totals 27, okay? And I believe the way the regulations state, I don't know if it's verbatim, but I believe what they allow is, or they give the right, the commission to allow up to a 30% shared use of the predominant uses spaces. The predominant use being the use with more spaces, so which is the retail use at 24 spaces. And if we are allowed to share up to 30% of that, I believe 30% 24, put me on the spot here, seven, I believe it's seven or eight spaces. We don't need to share seven or eight, we only need to share three. So by that rationale, we're not taking advantage of the full 30%, we're only taking 12 and a half percent of shared spaces. Hopefully you followed that?
Yeah, 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 yeah. It was a semantic, so I wasn't, I misunderstood what you originally said and clarified it. Thank you. The bumper on the Monroe Muffler side?
Over here. It sounds?
Yeah.
Yep.
No, we'll come back to it. Go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Mark?
Okay. Um, on your list of plantings, I'm just questioning, the fairy rose, is that, is that an invasive species?
Is that on the invasive species list?
No, definitely not.
It's not? Okay. Just double-checking.
Of course.
Um, let's see. Oh, I agree with my fellow Christian down there about the hoses being longer. I can tell you that I pull into various gas stations and I find out that I'm on the wrong side. A lot. Maybe it's my age, I don't know, but it's something to consider, it may like a whole lot easier for many people who do the same thing, at least I'm willing to admit it.
I'll never ask for directions or admit that.
Age has its privileges.
Is this all, quick question, is all self-filling? I mean, where's not being filled by an attendant?
Oh, no, it's all self-serve.
Let me just clarify too.
Go ahead.
With anybody with disabilities, we had incorporated into the plan set what Cumberland Farms, this is a standard, it's not new to the revised plan set, but I believe it's Detail 9.4. We do show an image of if anybody with disabilities needs help at the pump, there's a phone number, instructions to call, and Cumberland Farms is more than happy to help anybody with disability at the pumps. So if somebody chooses or needs the help, Cumberland Farms is more than willing to help.
Okay.
So there's a disability there not knowing which side the gas tank's on?
One would say.
All right, so what Mr. Rocky is indicating is that for all gas station operations, whether it's Cumberland Farms or anybody else, part of the process is a phone number to give aid. Karen, keep going.
Okay. Are you going to be pumping any music or playing any music out by the pumps?
The pumps do have that option, and I believe, I believe it is, it is under their current proposed assumption.
Would you consider not playing music?
I know they can reduce the decibel levels, but Joe might have to look at it.
If there were a situation where it's going to impact somebody, the answer is yes. I think though, and I, Mr. Lukaszewski can probably even elaborate further, that what they use at the pump is a small screen that has a small speaker that can be heard pretty much by people who are at the pump or maybe, you know, want to cross. They do not do any kind of large speaker, loudspeaker, PA, anything that's blaring music across the site, nothing that you could hear off the site. Certainly not where the pumps are in relation to the building, and if you go back past the building, you have landscaping, then you have natural woods along Hattertown Road, then you have people who are across the street. With residents, I'm assuming, being your top concern there, so it's not something that's going to impact anyone.
Because we've had this issue before with the...
He said he would drop it.
Other property, thank you. Will you be, is your intention now or in the future, to put little, I call them winged signs around the gas pump? Some gas stations, I won't say who, that are very, they have large companies that are their sponsors, seem to put, buy Hi-Test, this octane, go inside and get a sandwich, and they seem to end up all around the pump.
No, I think the regulations don't allow additional signage at the pump, and that was a change that we made to actually even take the company logo off the pump. So other than the required by law signs that Mark referred to at the pump, there won't be any signage. There's a little screen that takes care of the advertising.
Incredibly.
I want to ask about the outdoor seating.
Sure.
What are the cooking arrangements? What kind of food will need to be made, take outside?
Sure. I can tell you some of that, but I have somebody here who knows it better than me. Mike, you want to come back up and talk about that? Everything is prepared off the premises, but he'll tell you how that's done.
Good evening, we're not proposing anything different than we do in our other locations in Connecticut and across New England. We strictly sell prepared food that is heated on-site, and a consumer can consume that food at the picnic tables.
All right. So you're not going to be cooking?
Mike Lukaszewski.
Thank you.
You're reheating, but you're not cooking?
We're heating, we're just heating prepared foods. We're not cooking.
Um, where are you going to put your ice box?
The ice merchandiser is, inside the store, it is a single door that is part of the freezer set.
Okay, so there'll be nothing on the outside?
No external ice on the outside.
Well, we'll have anything in the front of that building. Are you going to sell wood, antifreeze, anything like that?
I believe, and Joe can correct me on this, because I'm not familiar with the information that was submitted earlier, but I believe the town restriction is no saleable items outside on the sidewalk.
Okay. Um, let's see. Oh, are you going to have garbage cans anywhere on the outside of the building?
Normally, we would place one garbage can at each island in between the dispensers, which is a combination garbage, window wash, squeegee, eighty-cap accessible unit. And then we'll have a garbage can at each entrance, and have the air pump for pedestrians to use.
Okay, there'll be, will there be a garbage can where they're eating? Where people are going to be eating?
Yes.
All right. Oh, you mentioned putting up signs inside the windows.
No, he mentioned having windows that don't accommodate signs in the windows.
That don't accommodate signs, so?
Yeah, that was his comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Keep going.
There'll be no neon lights, correct? Only neon signs saying open, closed, hot dogs, anything like that? Newspapers, were open, were closed?
Again, town restriction, no neon signs, I believe, in the windows.
I'm just double-checking.
Just so I can add, we definitely conform to all towns. I supervise Ansonia, Connecticut, which made some changes to their signage program recently, and we have no outdoor displays or any offensive signs at the street that were requested.
The in and out on the right-hand side, you have the arrows going both directions, so you can go out left or go out right. I have a concern about that.
That's the one with two different lanes.
Let me just, yeah, let me just clarify. That is the old plan, but the plan you have in front of you is the new with two separate...
Right, I have a concern with having, going out to the left, I guess it would be.
Right.
Because there is a lot of traffic there in the morning, in the afternoon, and just in general, it's a really congested area. And I have a safety concern about people trying to go out there and take a left. I mean, trying to go out right sometimes is a problem, you're going with the traffic. To cross, over another lane or two lanes and take a left, I think that I would like to see only going out right instead of just going out left. I mean, that's it.
Each driveway designated, one in, one's an out, kind of?
Right, right.
So with respect to that, it would be very cumbersome to site operations to restrict, I mean, obviously, both curb cuts do not allow left-out, only one curb cut allows left-out. That left-out is key for the site, it is required for the site. And we are in front of Connecticut Department, this is a Connecticut Department of Transportation roadway, they have final jurisdiction number. We are coordinating, currently coordinating with ComDOT with this driveway configuration, but respect, we are going to... We are coordinating, currently coordinating with Comdat, uh, with this driveway configuration, but, uh, respect, we are gonna, we need to propose, or continue with the proposed layout for the driveways.
Okay, that's it for me for now.
Can I ask a follow-up? Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Why is it so key to the, to the site layout?
It's, uh, it's, it's, uh, just very superior for convenience, uh, to have the left out for anybody traveling, uh, let's say, north on Main Street, taking the left into the site. We are proposing some lane striping modifications in Main Street to try to help better alleviate those left turn movements into the site, and then if anybody chooses to take the left out, obviously, it's very bad at the peak hours from what our study explains.
I don't think the concern, I don't think the concern is turn, taking a left into the site.
Right, right.
It's, it's coming out because there's a stoplight, there's also the exit across the street.
Right.
Where there's gonna be egress there too, I'm just wondering how important it is and, and why coming out to the left.
It's, it's just, like I said, it's, it's basic site operations. Cumberland Farms is very adamant about, like I said, at least having one right out, out of the site they...
Alright, question thousand?
Thank you, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
Yeah, no, I mean, the only question I have that hasn't been asked is, again, similar to those concerns, coming out on this, this picture here onto Hattertown, is there gonna be some signage to, you know, reinforce that you can't make a left and go?
Oh, yes.
There will be, okay.
Yes, significant signage.
Because I think that's gonna be a temptation for people.
There is not only the no-left arrow with the slash.
Yeah.
No-left turn sign will be there.
Okay.
Uh, pavement arrow specifically saying right. We can even, uh, it's not proposed, but even the one-way, if we have the one-way sign directly across, keep that obviously in the right way, not in somebody's property, but directly across the driveway, one way to the right, also does a great deal of good.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Where are you proposing to put white spruce? I'm only asking because it's a small site and that gets to be a big tree.
Okay, if it, uh, obviously isn't, uh, that's not the most...
Depends upon where you're putting it.
Right, we're putting it mostly back here for the buffer to the residential.
Okay.
There already is a natural buffer here.
Yep.
Uh, and we're just doing as much as we can to enhance that.
Yep, alright, so you're putting it in the backup on Hattertown?
Although, nothing on the front, nothing on the back, there's, there's two over here to help screen again, but it's mainly out in this area.
You got some names here that, um, on, on the plant schedule, there's some names that I'm not familiar with. Your, your landscape person is comfortable with everything and the survivability?
Yeah, the, uh, one of the biggest concerns that we heard from town staff was, um, to replace a number of, we originally proposed a number of grasses. And town staff had said, well, you know, try to get some more shrubs in there, let's get away from the grasses. That's what we've done around the perimeter of rain gardens and throughout the site, was replace everything with nice flowering shrubs, uh, good-looking shrubs, good-looking, you know, healthy stuff native to the area. We did keep some of the grasses specifically in the rain garden areas, grasses are found to handle water inundation much better than shrub, uh, greater gluten uptake, uh, infiltration of groundwater, so, we're trying to still provide a healthy variety of plants, uh, so...
No, you are, I'm just making sure you're comfortable, like I said, some of the names I haven't seen before, and I'm in the plant business.
Okay, uh, if, if, if you choose, um, I can run up by our guys and...
Nope, no, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm just putting the question out there, you put the big tree in the area that'll hold the big tree, and you guys are comfortable with the names you got, I'm fine.
Sure.
Mister Chairman, you know, photos or descriptions of, of the types that we propose, we can certainly submit that, that would be useful to you, so you don't have to look it up.
I'm in the plant business. I recognize the name, I just don't recognize the, the specific name, that's all. The issue of music on gas pumps, I would very much like it if there was nothing coming out of the gas pumps. Matter, matter of fact, uh...
Except for gas.
Yeah, except for gas, it is quite, quite, quite frankly, now that I'm thinking about it going forward, we, we may, uh, we may wanna discuss that as a regulation for the commission. I, I know it is becoming a standard out there in the world, I think I was just up on the Mass Pike recently, or, or somebody's self-serve gas station in Massachusetts, and in certain communities, it might make sense. You are budding a residential zone, so I think for, obviously, it's a commercial district, but, uh, for budding a residential zone, maybe best just not to have any sounds pumping out of the gas pumps if you're...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that back and get confirmation, and I'll have that for you for next time, Mister Trump.
Also, the advertising in the screen, that's small, do you have the small screens on those pumps?
Yes.
And that's advertising your product or any product?
It's advertising Cumberland Farms. It'll, it'll have a little, you know, a little video in there about how good coffee is.
Does that emit a great deal of light?
No.
These color screens with the black and white screens, they just say, come and get milk for two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Their colors, their little color screens, it's like a little, it's like a little TV almost with just Cumberland Farms products on there, but please elaborate, Mister Lukaszewski.
Again, Mike Lukaszewski, Cumberland Farms, on the Wayne Ovation dispensers, which is the new dispenser that we use in our locations and you see across New England, the screen on the pump is actually twofold, it's utilized as a directions to access the soft keys on the left and right-hand side of the screen for the user to choose something, credit, debit, um, if they need a handicap assistance, there's a help button while the pump is idle. And then we launch advertisement while the consumer is pumping fuel, and then it goes back to a usage screen once the fueling is done.
So those are silent advertisements?
It's silent.
How big is this screen?
It is a eight-inch square screen, I believe.
I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
So it is a sizable, sizable screen?
No.
Which really doesn't comport with the sign regulations.
Would you see them from the road, or are they have that same little two-inch?
You will not see them from the road.
You can't see the, uh...
Probably some of your current retailers have Ovation Wayne pumps, it's a standardized dispenser, if they don't have Wayne's, they have Coparcos.
And again, it gives you the information to get the pumping going. Alright. Regarding the sign, um... I'm just gonna simply ask if you folks would be, I, I...
Pile on side, Mister Chairman?
What's that?
The pile on side?
Yeah, the free standing side out on the road. I, no, you don't have to, I, I was actually gonna say, it's, it, you, you, planter, stone, looks good for a gas station sign, would you be, uh, willing to make it a little shorter?
I'd have to take that back, um, that would be tough for this reason. And Mark was gonna show this in relation to the southerly driveway, I'm gonna ask him to show it.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna, I, I was gonna put the, I'll, I'll even put the caveat out there, I think you probably have some elevations to look at with your landscape and where you are on the road and all that, but if you could go shorter...
Well, let me show you why it's difficult, because we did consider that and, and we did get a comment about that. The sign is compliant with the regulations, and we brought it down in size and height. What Mark is showing you is a street-level photograph, uh, from the perspective of driving south on Route twenty-five. You're pretty much next to the shopping center at this location.
Yeah, the clock towers are directly to your right, the site is just on the...
You're at the traffic light.
Yes.
So here's our concern, um, as you're coming down with the shopping center and then ultimately the Cumberland Farms on your right-hand side, with the trees and vegetation there, which are owned by the adjacent property owner, we're not gonna be touching them. With all the, with all the various highway signs and things, you can't see our site very well as you're coming down here. So I'll, since I'm making reference to this, I wanna address the southerly driveway thing and the sign at the same time. The sign needs to be high enough that you can see it far enough away is, is, is the bottom line for us, because if it were closer to ground level, our concern is, and I think it's, it's real based on this perspective, you're not gonna see the Cumberland Farms until you get right up near it, and it, it can, it can promote bad decision-making by drivers, making more sudden stops. And that's one of the reasons that the southerly driveway is necessary also, because we think there's very real odds that people who will wanna turn into Cumberland Farms may not be able to do that into the northerly driveway in time, and so the southerly driveway allows them to come in and avoid having to, to add traffic and a turning movement at the intersection, it actually takes traffic off the road sooner, and then it's also necessary for that reason Mark explained about the tax, the sign, that, that's one of the reasons.
Isn't the majority of your patrons though, people that drive it every day?
I don't know if they dr, well, I don't know if they're driving it every day, but the majority is pa, is traffic that's passing by.
So I mean, the majority of people are gonna know where it is regardless of the sign.
I suppose some of them will, but, you know, it's, that's a fairly major thoroughfare, so I don't think we assume that, that everybody's driving it every day.
Your traffic report is in the high sixties is, is pass...
What's that?
I think your traffic report is, is indicating somewhat of a high sixty percentage as pass...
Is pass by, but that, but it doesn't give any, I, I haven't ever seen any data, um, that says it's always the same people, that's, that's where I can't, I can't confirm that.
Well, of course, it's not the same, you could always find, but the majority of the customers, I mean, we're creatures of that, who goes in place, obviously, you're gonna get other people who come by occasionally or whatever, but I do think the majority of your patrons are gonna be people who know exactly where it is.
Oh, okay, I'll let you guys debate this another time.
Yeah, I don't have any data to confirm that either way.
Back, back to the sign. So when I'm coming, when I'm heading north on Route twenty-five, looks like, can, can we agree you've got really good sightline, other than the fact that there's a lot of traffic? I'm looking at this picture, it looks nice and flat, so you've got good sightline.
It's a better sightline.
Right, so now we're talking about going down the hill.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not putting it out, out this, I'm not putting this out here for us to argue about, I'm just putting it out here for you to consider when you bring it back.
Sure.
I'm looking at this picture, I'm looking at the growth of the tree that is under the wires, I'm looking at a, looks like a for-sale sign that'll go away, and there's a light pole that has one of these big white boxes, and I'm actually thinking that your lower sign might be a little ea, if, if you lower the sign, you might find an easier time picking it up with your eye, because it'll be under the trees. And I'll leave that for you guys, when you go back, when you go back to the shop and you talk about it, see, and I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, maybe a little lower, if you can get it. What, what we've been asking people to do, um, is monuments, um, you are actually doing a planter bed with a sign on top of it. So in my mind, I'm saying I give you points for doing the planter bed, you're doing the landscape, so you want a little bit more height, I'm fine with that, you're putting the, the stone on it, you know, so that's a nice feature, um, and you guys can talk that through.
Well, sure, well, Mister Chairman, the, the one thing we have to look at in relation to it, and we will with the landscaping experts back in Mark's shop, is, um, we did not originally propose these taller shade trees right in the front, and when that was requested of us, that was a concern that we really analyzed closely because of this concern for the, the sightline as you're coming south on Route twenty-five. So we, we will look at the height, uh, your point is well-taken, we will consider that, we, we just have to look at what's the, where are those trees gonna be ultimately in relation to the eye of the sign too, or else the sign will, will not be seen for that reason.
And we can look at adjusting how those trees fit in there, and whether that's the right species, and again, they'll have a, a canopy too, we can look for trees that have a high canopy, and rather than having ones that go to flow really ground.
Okay, we'll go over all that.
Appreciate you looking at that.
Sure.
Now, what I need you to do is, and I've got the regulations open. Walk me through the shared parking piece, just so I get this done efficiently as a commission here. So we've got six point one point nine and six point one point ten, correct?
Yep, it's six point one point ten of your regulations that allows the sharing.
Right, but six, does it...
Eleven, I think is this.
Uh, I don't know if we...
Eleven is deferred and, and ten, which you cited in your memo, is the shared.
Right, but six point, do we have to start with six point one point nine, shared use of parking facility, or is that something else?
I think that, yeah, it's nine and ten that go together, but the eleven is the one that has the mechanics of the calculations, I believe, or excuse me, ten is the one that has the calculation. Nine is, nine is the more of, um...
Ten, ten has the thirty percent number in it.
Yep.
Eleven is deferred parking, we're not talking about deferred parking. And, and it's actually, it's, it's, you're, you're making an interesting use of the regulation, because I hadn't thought of this before, you've got a convenience store and a gas station on the same lot. I think the regulations are mostly talking about two separate uses, sharing, so two completely different buildings sharing one parking lot, or two parking lots, in this case, you've got one lot with two uses, and you wanna share the parking. So all I'm asking is that you walk me through it, so I do this properly when we get to the deliberation phase.
Mister Chairman, before he does it, the shared isn't necessarily two buildings, it is uses.
No, I said that.
Yeah, yeah.
Did it.
But to give you the best, better example to understand what is a typical share, and I'm saying this couldn't be done, uh, here, this one is more obvious, is a, a restaurant that has dinner service in comparisons to retail stores that have more, that's really, I'm not saying you don't fit into that mode, but I mean, that's...
Again, I'm just, I'm just asking Attorney Williams to walk me through, I think there are some requirements in six point one point nine that we wanna have on the record. That's all.
Oh, sure.
Am I, am I, am I reading this correctly? There's a cer, there's just a few things we should...
Yep.
You know, there is, there is something in there about, um... Something about a requirement of some kind of legal document, which obviously...
Yep, that's a, um, six point one point nine.
Yeah, do we even...
That seems to be talking about where there are separate business operators, that's the way I would read it. It says the parties involved shall submit a, a written perpetual reciprocal access and parking easement and maintenance agreement. Here you have all one property, all one operator, so we, we would just be signing an agreement with ourselves.
Right, and, um, like I said, I'm walking, I wanna walk us through it, so if, if we don't need that, let's figure that out between now and the next hearing, if we do need that, let's figure out what it is.
That one, I would say, if, if the commission approves this arrangement with the, you know, the specific understanding that it's shared parking amongst the same operator, then I think that satisfies the requirement in spirit.
Yeah, I don't think you're ever gonna divide the gas station from the convenience store.
No.
But again, I've just, there's, there's a few, there's a few things in there I think we're supposed to go over. So we, we talked about that. Parking study, decision-making, so are you, tell, tell the commission, uh, in your mind how this works between gas use and convenience use, I guess, yes?
Sure. And as it says later in the regulations in six point one point ten, the predominant use shares with the accessory use, and here, the predominant use is clearly the retail store and requires the most parking. The parking for the store is all located immediately adjacent to the store or just off to the side there on the north side of the site. Parking for the gas use obviously is always at a pump, and it's, you know, it's transient parking, people park at the gas pump, sometimes people park in the gas pump and walk into the store, and that, and that's why it makes, you know, there's room to do that, we actually have a crosswalk in the middle of the site and then at the southerly crosswalk, or a sidewalk. So it, it actually makes sense to make use of your sharing of your parking for this type of site, it makes probably perfect sense, I would say. And it also satisfies, we believe, the intent of your, of your parking regulation. Just to skip backwards a little bit, in six point one point two, uh, at the end of that paragraph, it says, parking spaces in excess or less than the minimum required standards shall be subject to the approval of the commission, as the intent of these regulations is to minimize the amount of impervious surface area in the town of Monroe. So we were trying to keep that intent in mind too, in proposing the sharing here, because Cumberland Farms and any retailer cares very much about having enough parking for its customers, of course. So what we have provided, we think is enough, and we think it makes sense to do a little bit of sharing, because there is redundancy there many times between a gas patron and a store patron.
Did you trade some of your parking spaces for landscape?
Did we trade, yes.
Thank you.
One of the, it was eighteen, I think, yes, near the, near the northerly corner of the store.
Well, you traded some.
Well, that was because of the reduction in the size, it's not the numbers.
Well, I think it's both.
Increase, yeah.
Well, of course.
Alright. I don't see anything else on that regulation, but between now and then, if you folks feel there's...
One of the things you should consider relative to that is, you know, we have a standard for retail, we have a standard for gas stations with gas.
Right.
And, you know, in, in the meantime, maybe we can also look at other places that do have standards for that, to get some handle on parking. But I would, I would venture to guess that obviously that combination use would have a lower parking ratio than them individually.
So Mister Dresda is pointing out that we've got an all-other caveat in there, and between now and the next time we meet, if it is your, if you could show experience-wise, other facilities, square footage-wise, what you're doing, how it's working, uh, that could probably satisfy as well.
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Martin asked me to ask you if you plan on installing a generator.
They typically don't install one permanently, I'm pretty sure the company has portable ones that it can bring to stores in the event of emergency, I know we've, we've heard that elsewhere, so I'm correct on that.
And all we're pointing out to you is, this is the time to put it on the plan if you want it, that way you can have it?
It wouldn't be a permanent installation that would count as a structure, it would just be something that's brought in, be temporarily run in the event of one of our wonderful snowstorms and power is knocked out, so that the gas station can operate for a day or something.
Right, we just actually had a temporary, uh, from the folks at Big Y, it's a docking station, but they still put it on the plan.
Okay.
You know, that way if you need any screening or anything...
Was just to mark the area where it will go when it's being used?
Yeah, a, a, and it depend, I don't know what you folks are gonna use, is it, is it just the guy goes to Lowe's and picks one up and brings it back? Or are we talking about something that's gonna... Or are we talking about something that's going to take a parking space and have wires, you know? Again, you don't need to explain it to me, I'm just saying that if you want to put it on the plan-
You can answer it right now, that may help.
We all remember, again, Mike Lukaszewski at Cumberland Farms, remember the storm three years ago in October, knocked out probably the majority of the gas stations in the state. Fortunately Cumberland Farms had many sites that had an external plug in the back of the building where we can drive a trailable generator down to keep the site running. Some towns actually used fire engines to keep sites running that interface of our buildings. So we do not like to install permanent generators because frankly they don't get used a lot.
We hope.
We hope.
Do you have a fleet or do you, do you?
We have maintenance contracts with various vendors across New England that utilize, and we generally put generators on hold every single season along with our snowplow contractors that have backup generators in case we need them.
Okay. I get the sense that there's a number of comments between, that, that I know Scott and Will had some concerns about some issues. Rather than get into them tonight, why don't we, have you guys work them out over the next two weeks? There was things about some turning lanes and some employee parking and how that was handled and- So I, I'm, with respect to, you know, some of those big ones, Scott and Will, why don't you hold off till after the meeting? Brian, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question. Do you have any data on what Cumberland Farms' peak hours of business are? Where are they busiest in the day? Is it primarily coffee things in the morning?
It would be the, it would be the peak hours that are identified in the traffic study. Do you, can you mention more on that?
Yes.
So be, so like, like was said a moment ago, you know, the majority of customers are traffic that's passing by already. So by definition, that means most of the customers are happening during the peak traffic period when more people are driving by.
One of the things I've read recently about your company is that you're trying to get in to compete with Dunkin' Donuts and with Starbucks, which is coffee side of the business, which usually relates to morning traffic, which is very busy on this road, southbound, every morning. That's what I'm referring to, is it-
Yep.
That morning peak hour busier for you than your evening peak hour? Is there any time that you deviate from the out peak hours of traffic? Obviously, a lot of companies do, is your, I don't know how you generate that. Again, do you have data like that that shows what?
I don't, I don't think it deviates from the peaks in any way. I think typically the PM peak actually is, is greater than the AM, that's generally the case. I can't remember for sure if this traffic study says that, but we'll look at that and remind you where that is and what the numbers are. But otherwise, no, there's nothing different than the ordinary, which is there's a peak in the morning time and then typically there's an even greater peak in the afternoon.
Okay, thanks. That alleviates some of my concerns about the traffic. Know what time we get most of the traffic, southbound and northbound.
Okay. Anything else, because I, I know Attorney Williams wanted to go through a couple of things with us, and again, we are coming back in a couple of weeks.
Quickly, are you guys selling oil, which is washer fluid, fluids that people may be putting in their cars in the parking lot?
Well, they don't, you know, encourage people to, or allow people to work on their cars in the parking lot, but yes, there is sale of motor oil and some other automotive fluids.
I understand you, you guys may not encourage it, but people, people may do it, so.
That, that generally hasn't come up as a problem, although I would say I'm sure the store management employees are watching out for that sort of thing. And, you know, all of the controls are in place on the site if anybody were to drip or leak something, just, just the same as with the gas pumps.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Let's go to your questions for us, Attorney Williams.
Sure. Some of them may be responses, and the reason, what you said, Mr. Chairman, is what we would normally do, it's just that we already have done that. And so some of the things are, are things that would create a, you know, because we've already made a lot of changes. And honestly, not, not to brag, but Mark talked about how, how proud he is and he should be with this site design. And really what we're seeing is Cumberland Farms is designing and constructing some of the nicest gas stations in the state of Connecticut. And this honestly, I'm not trying to sell you on it, this is one of the nicest ones we've ever proposed because the additional planters, the rain gardens are not usually things you see at a gas station. And they were well over the budget of what was initially contemplated for the site. So that, that's kind of where we are at the moment. But some of the things that we got, again, in the comments today are things we just can't do or agree with. And so I think if we go back and talk about it with, with staff, we're probably not going to make further progress on these issues without input from the commission and knowing how you feel about it. Because some of them are preferences and then some of them may be interpretive things that we need to discuss.
Go ahead.
All right. I can skip all the way, does the commission have the memo from Mr. Agresta of today?
I don't have it.
No, I think you got one on your desk. Town Planner, October 15.
Yeah.
Skip to where?
Can skip over to page three. Just two quick things on this page and then we'll have more on the last three pages. Under Traffic, Comment A, so For Traffic, this is on page three. Comment For Traffic A asks when the traffic counts were taken. I just want to ask Mark Rock to clarify that right now just so that it doesn't linger.
That was just a confusion of the date of the, for traffic counts were done in December during school time, so that was a concern. So we can certainly update the traffic report to reflect that correct information and apologize for-
And then Comment D is that the report should be expanded to address the pre and post queuing capacity on southbound Main Street. I just basically wanted to see if that's something the commission wants us to do, if so, we can do that between now and your next hearing.
Report should be expanded to address the pre and post queueing capacity on south. So you did the report before or after the Main Street intersection improvements?
The, the report was written this past June.
So af- after the, after the improvements?
So, yeah, the counts were done, like I said, back in December, so.
So Will, is that still something?
That's a different issue, we're talking about D now, I thought.
What's that?
We're talking about D, we're not talking about the counts.
Well, I was clarifying what the report was written.
What, what are you looking for, Will?
Well, I wanted to see what current queue is, and then they're going to do modifications in the lane striping. And then Scott has other ancillary comments about bypassing lanes. And what that does to the queue, how it changes it with the added traffic from the site or how the site operations work with the driveways and to see exactly how that queue affects. I don't know if that means that if you really look at it, the queue is all the way past again, it may be no difference. But that's sort of what I'm trying to, to understand better is that where is that queue today? And where is it with the modifications that they're doing? Is anything shorter, is anything longer, does it change because of the, because of the turning lane instead of being proposed and the driveway movements?
So, so Will's not asking you to go back and do another report, he's asking you to report some more on what you're finding after you make changes to the road. Is that, did I just interpret that right for everybody?
I don't think so.
I think there, I think there are some discussions, some concerns, some items to work through between you and staff that are questions about some of the queuing, some of the line stripings.
Okay.
Just as a general topic, just so everybody understands each other a little better. I mean, I think we all recognize that there are situations on Route 25, but I think it's incumbent upon us all to, you know, seize on the opportunity, you have a raw site. If there is anything that can be done, you know, to improve the situation, you know, let's try and do it. Because, you know, in the end, and we've seen this in Monroe historically since Route 25 opened, the state just makes a decision, they come and they grab. And, you know, if you look down the street, you've got a church where you walk out and if you trip, you're going to get hit by a truck. So it's, you know, as you've pointed out, you've got a lot of investment here in this site. And I would hate to see DOT, you know, push this road back to your sidewalks.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, it, I think it's incumbent to at least see what you can do. I, and I think that's what Will's looking for is, is, I think it's a discussion with you and Will and Scott, everybody together. Let's see where all these lines work up, you know, the traffic is what it is, this is Monroe.
Okay, fine on that one. The next page, several of the comments have to do with eliminating the southerly driveway. We've talked about that some, you know, it's, it's something that Cumberland Farms, for a number of reasons, would strongly like to maintain. We don't think, based on our traffic study, that it creates any kind of hazardous situation. But this is something where it would be helpful to us to discuss it with the commission or hear some feedback from you because we wouldn't want to come back a month from now or however long it is, then hear that and then have to ask you to come to a third hearing because then we have to go back and talk and decide if we're going to change something. So if you're, if you're able to give us some direction on it, it would be very helpful.
Did you get any questions on it tonight? On the southern driveway?
I don't believe so.
I think it was just in general driveways.
I think there was some questions on the northern driveway or some comments on the northern driveway.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Do you want us to address that now or?
Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to do here is, is not cross over the line of deliberating on an open hearing.
Yeah, fair.
Because then we're, then we're prejudging. And I think to Attorney Williams' point, he doesn't want to come back for a third hearing, and I agree. However, since nobody weighed in on it, you've all had the packet for a while now. You've, you've kind of left, you've kind of left your opinion on it by not speaking about it.
Thank you. On the, on the parking calculation, really, I think we discussed that already. If there's any other questions on that, happy to entertain them. Other than to say, even though we may not agree about, I don't think we do agree about whether parking is required for the outdoor seating because it's not between any walls and it's not additional use and it doesn't generate additional parking or demand. Even if you wanted to require another couple of spaces for it, it can be subsumed within the sharing that the regulations allow. Because we're only asking to share three spaces and, and we could share up to eight, I think it is. So I would just note that if you can calculate it that way if the commission wishes.
Again, I think those are things that we've already said you guys are going to, you're going to, you're going to discuss. And as you pointed out, you're only asking for 12 percent out of a possible 30.
Correct.
Okay, what else?
Uh, let's see, on the signage, I'm just, some of it we may have talked about, so we just skimmed out and not waste your time by bringing things up if we already hit that.
I'll agree with Will, we are trying to ask people more to go with downcast lighting instead of internal illumination. I know that gas itself is a different beastie where it's internally lit. I don't know if there's a way around that.
It's LED, I don't know.
Right, but if, are there other lights on the sign?
Can you bring the sign?
Is, is that what you're talking about, will, other lights or the, or the gas pricing?
No, I, I have no problem with the gas lighting being, the LED actually is better than the, the manual changing the numbers. It's really the, the box above and the, to some degree also the one on the store.
Yeah, the only thing that's lit on here, and this is what we wanted to discuss with you because we actually, we believe in many towns have, you know, reacted this way that it's a less intrusive and less intense sign given that you only have these push-through plastic letters and this little light green logo that are lit. And we, so that, we think is easier to see, creates no light spillage and is, is better than having a, you know, a light that has to glare onto it.
Are you saying the background is not lit?
The background is not lit, that was the other thing I wanted to bring up with regard to the white background comment D under signage number eight. I didn't, we didn't think that, we looked at that, we didn't think that counted because the white background is not lit. So at night, the only thing you see is the word Cumberland, the word Farms and the little green logo above it.
And you showed us some pictures somewhere in here, your general sight lighting is this muted kind of thing?
Correct. It's LED, called downlit.
This is why we use the big screen here so you can put all your, all your good stuff up there.
Is there a, a sample close by that has that kind of sign light, so maybe I can go look at it?
Sure, probably Ensignia.
Sheldon has it.
Ensignia does.
Because you're right, at nighttime, if, if the white appears as something not white.
Will, Will is bringing up a point that in the past, we're trying to convert everything over time to get away from these big white panels that blow light over everybody. And if that's not what you're doing, that's great, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, that's, that's not what we're doing.
Excellent.
There's no lighting on the white part.
And that's not an issue that would cause a third public hearing.
Okay.
What else?
Over on to the next page. Oh, just to clear it up right now, if we can, G at the top of page six, we have removed-
Yep, you went over that, yep.
I, I heard that a couple of times and that's great, your drawings do not reflect that, though. The engineer's drawings do, not the architectural ones.
Oh, it's, it's not reflected in the architectural, you see.
Those are still all on-
Let me confirm for the record that we are not going to do that, we're not claiming it, and we're deleting it from the architectural plan. We can submit a revision if you want. I just note that when we, when we submit revisions, it was about 43 sheets, large size, and there were 12 of them. So whatever you think is most efficient and environmentally conscious for us to submit revisions, we would like to do that for you.
You know what, for just that single one, I don't see the need to get everybody new copies of plans.
Okay. The engineered plan controls and there will not be branding signage at the pump, so you have that confirmation? And there's a note on the plan about that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Same thing for H, we removed the signage from the canopy and you can see that on the canopy, the, the detail was left on 12.1, so we're not, we're not claiming that, we're not doing it.
I saw that on your plans.
Consider it strictly.
Okay.
Okay, as to lighting, this may be something the commission wants to weigh on, or if you do, just please tell us. We did, why don't, why don't you talk about this, Mark? We did upgrade the fixtures to as decorative as we can make them.
The rendering here, you can see the, it's more of an acorn style fixture rather than a completely flat layout. These are originally, those are the technical, what we've done was chosen to, this is probably a poor original. We are going to be proposing these more decorative fixtures throughout the entire site. So we heard staff comments, we tried to find a good compromise between what Cumberland Farms can actually provide throughout the site versus that strictly flat LED. Feel like this would be the-
What's on top of, is there something on top of that fixture? Because I can't see any, it looks like it's flat. So a flat-
More decorative acorn style.
I, I think, I think what Will is, is pointing out to you is, there's a new medical facility just down the road and the facility that was approved just across the street from you. I, I think there was lighting and we're just trying to cohesive, get everybody a little cohesive in what's there. So maybe if you can get, get a review of what the site across the street had and see if that fits within your particular-
Well, yeah, and it wasn't, wasn't stubbornness or anything like that, maybe Mark can swing it further. We looked for if we can do the kind of fixture in there and maybe swing it further while we go in with the one we proposed.
It's strictly to what the vendor for Cumberland Farms has available to them. They have deals with certain vendors for certain money, they really only use one vendor. And this is the only fixture that they have that, that's the most deprettive. They don't have another option with this kind of peak to revive. I adamantly told Cumberland Farms, hey, what do you have for me that we can show to the city? They feel that this design is, it's much more different than the first one, but they just don't have, through their manufacturer, they don't have one with the peak that's actually outlined in the comments.
Well, if you're going back to the, to the powers that be, and we got two weeks, I, I think what I'm saying to you is the commission has been trying to get some standardization of what the lights are. You know, you've got, you've got, we're, we're not asking you to get golden light. And I, I understand if Cumberland Farms is comfortable with certain vendors. But we are trying to draw the area together as much as we can aesthetically.
Okay, we'll take a look at them.
Appreciate it.
Okay, then under Buildings, well, let's see, is there anything we need to talk about on the Lighting and Operation Plan?
Yeah, I think what Will is, is referring to are notes on the plans.
Yep, that's fine. Under Buildings and Structures, just to keep moving. We'll take a look at the building height on B, the, the tank, fuel tank detailing. We did, we did give a lot more detail than we ever typically give to a planning and zoning commission in a plan set on the, on the tanks because it's typically more than zoning gets into or has, has anything to do with zoning compliance. That's part of the reason we added so many sheets to the set. I'd like to ask Mark here to just describe further how much additional work that would require that is almost never done before there's a zoning approval. And, and to confirm whether or not we have already verified that there are no utility conflicts, which appears to be the, the reason for the comment.
Even so, this is the old landscaping plan. It's still an accurate representation of the underground fuel lines for the tanks. These number of lines here going to the underground storage tanks and then up here, coming directly again to the underground storage tanks. And there's ventilation lines to the vent stack cluster here. So there are no drainage, utility crossings. One of the staff comments was to show the wiring for the site lighting. All the site lighting will be wired through landscaping so it's not going to cross any of the underground pipes. So from a strictly engineering standpoint, there is no conflicts we need to worry about other than there's canopy roof drain pipes right here. So you can see the canopy drain pipe here, here, and now at the last, but we do do an extremely detailed elevation thorough check between the drainage lines and the crossings and the product lines. And I can assure you that this is all designed and it will all work as designed. There's no crossings. To that end, there was a number of, I think a couple of comments from town staff about U-shaped bollards, details specific to the underground fuel tanks, the piping. We've provided what we call is the prototypical tank and pump plants. It's sheets 14-0 through 14-6. There's an extensive number of details in there. And what we really deviated from those prototypical ones to final construction are a number of, you know, tank orientations, making sure the layout looks exactly like it's supposed to look on the construction plans. And it's a number of hours to meticulously go through the prototypical details and get them site-specific. The details say for the air stack cluster right here, obviously that doesn't change from site to site. But to, you know, reroute all these pipes for these specific tank and pump plants, it's a very cumbersome task to do during this permitting stage. We more than do it and we budget for it during construction. And it's a very detailed process to make sure everything lines up perfectly, but to do it now, it almost serves no true purpose. The specific details don't change to construction. It's just a lot of reorienting that the site plan has to make sure it all works.
So are you asking to bring the level of detail back to the town when you get to the construction phase as opposed to the permitting phase?
Right. Which we do for any site to apply for building.
Okay, hold on. Will, does that work?
Yeah, I mean, I just get nervous when I see drawings that got big words, preliminary and then disclaimers about how this isn't really what we're proposing. It just looks sort of like, I get a lot of what you're saying.
Sure.
But you see the drawings, it's like, why is this site special? I mean, this isn't rocket science for you guys. It's just stuff that the state can build everywhere.
It's very detailed.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Okay, so asked and answered what you'll provide through the construction phase is the level of detail Will is talking about for now for the commission phase. We know you're burying tanks. We know you're burying them in the corner there. All right. Keep going.
It seems like a fairly minor detail, but just because some we've talked about in the comment remains to see. The white vinyl fence that we're proposing around the dumpster, which is actually something that one of the ARB members cheered over. It's, you know, slightly glossy, but it's not something that creates any kind of glare that's a danger to anyone. So, you know, it's a fairly standard PVC material. I think there's a photograph of it in the attachments to Mark's memo to you. So I just wanted to make that explanation rather than doing it next time, that we don't know what we would change that to and it's, we don't think the reflective character of it is a problem.
Can't you just get one with a matte finish or something with a different tone, color? It's really the glossy. The glossy is highly reflective. And I'm also worried about it being a danger to someone driving off the road or anything. But when you have a light, the light you have on the site, from the traffic light, there's a high intensity of reflection from the white vinyl that is glossy finished. Those things come in matte finishes, those come in off-white colors. The building is white, isn't it? Is it a white?
It's a cream colored vinyl siding.
So why couldn't it be something in the same range as that and probably the same non-glossy finish that that's going to have?
For fencing, we don't know. Nobody has said to me where else they would have. That's very easy. We can do that. So I don't know of a matte finish in a fence like that. And it's, you know, it's a standard thing that is order for all the sites. I'm not saying it can't be changed. I just don't think it needs to be. And it, you know, it's not a reflection problem that's going to affect anybody, I don't think.
We've been asking applicants to look at matte finishes and other covers to coordinate the buildings.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's something you could look into.
Why don't we leave it as, take a look into it, to Commissioner Martin's point, we have been asking people for, you know, stuff that is muted.
Okay.
Excellent. Anything else on town planner?
Yes. The last thing on page six.
Can you put the first thing you had up tonight, the very first rendering you had? Not on the computer.
The board.
That shows the camera.
Yep. Oh, yeah, we have another one that's an example. The comment here is about the fascia. And this was a comment that Mr. Agresta asked to have made to the architectural review board, just so you know. So they looked at that and we discussed it with ARB as well. They did not ask us to make any change. But the fascia on the canopy is what it needs to be, is the short answer. And it needs to be for operational and public safety reasons because there's an extensive.
Sure.
Right, there's an extensive series of piping behind the front fascia of the canopy that has fire suppressant in it and it's required by code. So you'll see the little nozzles of hoses sticking out at the bottom of the canopy. That's so that it can immediately deploy and put out a fire if there was to be one where somebody's fueling. So Cumberland Farms has no interest in making the canopy any taller than it needs to be. But it's that, it needs to be that tall to contain that equipment because it's a hollow, you know, wall and there's all kinds of piping and equipment inside. What we have that we think is a good feature on the site is the mansard roof on top of the canopy. And that's something that a number of years ago was not being proposed. And we can show you a picture of what that looks like. And a number of towns were asking us to do it. So now it's the standard proposal Cumberland Farms makes. And we think it makes the canopy relate well to the building. Mark?
This is a site in North East Connecticut. This is a true, this is a computer render. This is a true constructed site. You can kind of see the relation to the canopy with the mansard roof to the building.
We think the mansard roof helps a lot take away some of the look of the massing of the canopy. We have a photo of one where we did not do that. You can see the difference.
So this site here, this is a recently constructed store in Ensonia. You can see the canopy obviously does not have the mansard roof on it. At least it kind of looks.
I was not uncausating of the need for the height you need for the equipment inside. We had already, you weren't in the meeting, but when we met, that was discussed and I understood that. And the commentary was really to extend the roof line, pass that line. It still would have that same interior area and the roof would be more substantial because the mansard really is kind of dwarfed by that fascia. I mean, honestly, the mansard is better than a pure flat roof. Okay, I'd rather see a little, I'm trying to get a little bit more of the roof, of the mansard roof to be the dominant feature and not the fascia. And in this angle at least, the fascia to me is the predominant aspect. And of course, it depends on where you stand and where you look. And what I was really suggesting is that a roof cannot further out. It would make the canopy a little larger in that respect. But it's still, your cavity would still be within side that structure.
Right, we did have that comment as well and we looked at it, analyzed it. I'm not an architect who could articulate it perfectly, but our architect did look at that as part of the discussion with the architectural review board and explained why that won't work and would be very difficult to do. So we wanted to see if there was any further comment or request from the commission on that. But wanted to explain to you where we were coming from so that we, you know, had aired all the issues hopefully upfront.
Any questions on the mansard roof?
I like the idea. I would like you to explore what Will suggested if that's at all possible. I think that that would be a nice enhancement. And again, maybe the angle of the photo was taken, but, you know, it's all difficult for us to see. Oh, excuse me, the computer generated. Which is very helpful and I appreciate the fact that you sent, you know, that you have these pictures. It's very helpful for us.
Anyone else?
Could you talk a bit about the bollards?
No, we're talking about the roof over the canopy.
I thought you were moving on.
No.
Oh, we can do, we're prepared to do that because that is a, maybe I skipped that by accident, but that is a comment that came back again. The bollards are essential for life safety, for public safety. There have been instances of cars driving into the buildings. There have been instances and there is resulting litigation unfortunately, of cars driving into people on the sidewalk in front of the buildings. I'm sure you folks are familiar with, I only heard about it, but I know there was a notorious incident of somebody driving at 50-some miles an hour off I-95 into the Cumberland Farms in Fairfield and hit the bollard and it stopped the car, fortunately. And didn't drive through the stores it probably would have otherwise. So we have to have those. We have to have the spacing because there are smaller cars that can fit between, you know, if the spacing was wider, as I think was the suggestion, there are cars, smart cars and Mini Coopers or various things that could fit in between them. So the six feet on center, that's essential. What we did propose, and I think it meets, I hope, or helps address the comment that's in the most recent memo from Mr. Agresta. We did propose a decorative bollard cap or sleeve over the bollards that has the look of wrought iron. It's not wrought iron, that will peel and rust, but it has the look of it. And Mark has photos for you. This was something that, just so you know.
Mark, can you give one to Will and we can mark it in as an exhibit?
Layer 24.
And just as an FYI, the same comment was raised and discussed with the architectural review board. They did not ask us to make any change. But if the commission feels strongly that the white bollards are so insidly that there needs to be a change, Cumberland Farms can switch to the ones that are in the photo. That's what we can offer on that.
I like them.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Okay, with the black.
Almost like the white one's better, but.
I mean, the black will stand out more. I think that's obvious to anyone. You will see them actually more against the cream colored siding and the cultured stone. So I think it's something that it's fair to say we can go either way on. It's not something the commission has to decide right now. We've told you we're willing to do that, so really, now that we've discussed it, if you want to save it for your deliberations and you can tell us if it's a condition of approval, then we will accept that bollard.
Let's do that.
We can't accept making them further apart and we can't accept putting planters all across the front of the store for a variety of reasons. We can discuss if you would like, but we did add several planters in response to staff comments.
Just so that they can have a broad discussion for that. Is this alternative bollard available in white?
I think the colors are, I think the colors can change. Do you have?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
He said, is the decorative bollard available in white?
Or a cream that goes with the building?
Obviously, it wouldn't look like wrought iron at that point.
Right, yeah, it was this kind of faux wrought iron look.
It doesn't look like wrought iron right now. That's fine.
Well, why would it be better if it were that shape and it was white as opposed to what we're proposing?
Well, the shape is giving some architectural detail to it, which makes it a little bit more designed and a little bit more attractive in the sense that it was intended to be that way as opposed to the typical bollard, which isn't really all that attractive and for the most part is just paint, a little piece of metal. So I think the articulation, the graphic that it has on it is the separation. It just gives it a little bit more character. The white would still give some of that to it, but it may, as you said, the black will stand, I'm fine with either one. It's up to the commission, but you're right, the black will stand out more to your building. But if you had one that was in the cream color or even one in the white, I'm just opening the broad discussion for the commission to make decisions of what they want with prefer overall.
We will report for your next meeting if that decorative bollard is available in white or cream and if so, you can tell us to use it.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
We all set?
Yes.
Okay. What I'd like to do now is open the floor. So Attorney Williams, you and your team can sit for a minute. Ladies and gentlemen, I read the rules, rules of the road at the beginning of the meeting. We're now going to take public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak for the application? Anybody? Anybody, anyone? All right. Anybody who would like to speak against the application? Anybody, anyone? Anybody with a general comment or question on the application? Come on up, sir. Name an address for the record.
The House of 272 Stanley Road. I just have a couple of questions, simple questions and simple, except for the exit, go on to Hattertown Road. Zoe, you can pop that up. There's like a little triangle coming out on the south end. There's a little triangle that lets you go either left or right. Coming out the backside, it's just plain open. Now, sometime before this, there was another application to do the same thing, come back, to come out on to Hattertown Road. That is a one-way going one way and to the west. Right next door, Monroe, turn, freight store, has an exit on to Hattertown Road. And it was mentioned tonight that considering putting a one-way sign across from that entrance, I can tell you that that doesn't mean a thing to a lot of people. People come out of that back, from the Monroe, and turn left and make it a five-way intersection instead of a four-way intersection. And it's really dangerous. What I'd like to see is some way to turn the right, those who are coming out to the road. Make sure that they can only go to the right somehow. That is a real thing. I live at the other end of that, I live on.
Lee, you got to talk to us.
My driveway is on Hattertown Road. And my property is right on the corner where that one-way ends. I can tell you there are do not enter signs in the middle of the road and on the side saying do not enter one-way. People go around it anyway. So if you can make it somehow so they can't go the other way, that would really satisfy me.
Yeah, understood.
It's a dangerous thing coming up and meeting somebody on that very narrow road.
Yep, I think they understand what you're asking. Anything else?
Yeah, a couple of things. The trees or bushes or whatever they would put on the backside of the property on to Hattertown, what will be buffered to those residential houses that are, buffering either sound or light or whatever? The, I don't know if this has come up or not, but will there be diesel along with the gas?
Yes.
And will there be in the same pump or separate pumps?
I'll let them answer that for you.
Just a question. And I think that's it.
All right.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Last call for tonight. Okay. Attorney Williams?
I don't know if you.
We answer those right now.
That's what I was going to offer.
We will consider if we help the commission evaluate the issue, we can consider doing to the exit on to Hattertown Road what we've done to the southerly driveway on to Main Street, which is to divide it, put in like a sort of a pork chop thing and angle the exit to the right. It is a one-way road, but if somebody's telling us that people will still turn left, well, I suppose that could be happening then. So if we can help avoid that, we need to take it back and get approval, but we will bring it back for consideration.
Thank you for reevaluating that.
Second, on the buffer, if you visit the rear of the site along Hattertown Road, you will see there's fairly considerable existing vegetation along the roadside. And our site plan and landscaping plan makes clear that there's at least a few feet in off the road of existing vegetation that will remain that we're not going to touch so that people who live on Hattertown Road will see, you know, certainly when there's leaves on them, will see for the most part the same vegetation they see now. And then all the plantings and the, I think it was white spruce that you asked about, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, yeah, all the additional landscaping that you see on the site plan is all inside of that, so adding to the existing vegetation. Third question was, is diesel at the same pump? The answer is yes. But these are not, just so you know, they're not high-flow, high-volume pumps that a, you know, a large tractor-trailer would come to to fill up for diesel. It's diesel that would go into. It's diesel that would go into, you know, passenger vehicles. Yeah, I thought of that, but I just didn't want to get into that. We can't ban them from the site.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, at this point, I believe we're all in agreement. We're going to come back in two weeks. So we're going to continue the hearing?
Be sure.
All right. Folks, we're going to continue this for two weeks. So that takes care of SCP two thousand fifteen seventeen. File one five six eight four five five Main Street. We'll see you in two weeks.
On, on the twenty-ninth?
Will? What's the date?
No, the next meeting is November fifth. But we have to have enough, we have enough time for you to do stuff and you have lead time to get the material back. It'll be a week before that. No, that's the meeting, but really we'd need materials the Wednesday before, the week before. That's the last week of, uh, the ninth. That's the twenty-ninth. Okay. Is that sufficient time for you?
All right. Next up, Site Plan Review. Item six, Site Development Plan, SDP two thousand fifteen oh five. File one one seven four forty, Main Street, Building Addition and Handicap Access, Tyberry Kitchen. I have a letter of extension request to November nineteenth for that one?
The letter is granting an extension to have meetings up until November nineteenth. The vision is that it would be on November fifth and that survives nineteen for a decision.
Okay.
So the game plan is for November fifth.
All right. So that'll be on eleven five. That brings us to item number seven. Permit amendments, modifications, extensions, five dash oh seven dash S dash dash A one. File one four five seven A, two forty-one Roosevelt Drive. SCP Amendment to Add A Generator. This is the Henny Penny Store down on Route thirty-four. It's all gas stations tonight. All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What a chance if we could have a five-minute break to stretch our legs?
Five-minute recess.
Ah, thank you.
Commission's back in session. It is ten oh three. We are the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, October fifteen, two thousand, yeah, October fifteen, two thousand fifteen. We are on item seven, Permit Amendment Modification Extension. We're on two forty-one Roosevelt Drive, Add A Generator. Will, are you going to walk us through this one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have an image, but.
All right, we got a standard Generac generator going down at the Henny Penny, which is the gas station on Route thirty-four.
Yeah, they, I don't know how well you know the site, but if you're looking straight at the building, they originally imposed an island which is about the same depth as where the building is, is where they originally imposed it. I made a suggestion that they put it at the back of the existing dumpster, which is in the back corner. And that way, the dumpster could hide it and you wouldn't have it, you wouldn't see it. And they, they changed their plans to basically put it there. And you can see the pictures that are, that are in my memo, I believe in my memo. You can see what the dumpster, the dumpster enclosure looks like. That will move forward a little bit and the generator will be behind it and it'll look the same as it does here. The only other issue is that there are longstanding issues with the construction of the store that are not in compliance. But so we're making, making, making our way through those as best we can.
Okay. Questions? Any questions?
No.
All right. So my understanding is we're moving the applicant through taking care of outstanding issues from the original construction for which we are still holding a bond. Yes?
Well, we have a restoration bond, we have a performance bond, but we do have a bond.
We still have twenty thousand bucks of their money, which they're not going to get back until they finish the original SCP. They're asking to add a generator. I don't hear any other questions on it. So at this point, the Chair would entertain a motion?
And I would suggest that there are a few little plan edits that we include in that.
What should we include?
They're my items two and number five.
Two and number five. The plan should be revised to include the following additional details. Yes?
Yes.
And then you have item four?
Well, item four is the outstanding issues.
Well, but there's a lot of stuff that's crossed off.
Yeah, those are things that have been dealt with in the recent mission.
Right. So it looks like one is taken care of and two is taken care of. Yes? Three is taken care of. Four is the outstanding issues, which we discussed you're going to get them getting on it. So you want five included in the motion, the zoning chart?
No, it's, it's number two and number five.
I'm sorry.
Number two has a little few details on the plans that relate to the generator, the movement of the generator. Very simple stuff.
Oh, okay. You just crossed out the first couple of words. It's so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I, I just have a couple of things too you could add to it and that's number administrative three, just a statement about how to, the mechanics of how to incorporate it into the bond. And general, number three, details of the dumpster pattern enclosure to be included. And the number four, curving be provided around the base of the patio. That's it for me.
I lost some of your comments. I didn't get your second page. Question, do we even need to ask for a bond for this?
It's, it's not asking for a bond. It's just a clarification on, what they do is they just add verbiage. It's just a reference on the current bond. So I'm, I'm not suggesting any new bond.
I didn't say you were suggesting a new bond, but you're attaching the generator work to the existing bond.
Correct.
I'm asking the question, do we even need to do that? They obviously want to do the generator. They're going to do it.
Well, I mean, you could go either way. If it's a simple thing, all we do is make a reference to this approval on the old.
I, I heard you. I understand, but it's a simple generator. Either they do it or they don't. It's not like landscape and lighting and, and bollards and it's a generator. If they don't, they're only hurting themselves. See what I'm saying?
It's a sites, you know what? It doesn't matter to me. I, I, I got their money and.
Right, just make it simple.
Site stabilization, so not a problem.
Yeah, okay. What was your second comment, Scott? Because my.
Just that the, the detail of the dumpster pattern enclosure be included so we know what to require in the end. And that it include a raised curbing around the edge of it so we don't have environmental issues or drainage issues running off in the wrong direction.
Dumpster detail and raised curbing. All right. So the Chair is looking for a motion to add a, Chair would entertain a motion for this modification to the permit, which should also include Town Planner's comments, number two and five, as well as Town Engineer's comments about the dumpster detail and the raised curbing around said dumpster. Anybody want to make a motion?
So.
It might be something like move to approve.
Yeah, so moved, as Pat just said, for application five dash oh seven dash S dash A one. File number one four five seven A, two forty-one Roosevelt Drive. SCP Amendment to Add A Generator that will include staff comments, number two. Number five, dumpster comment detail.
From the Town Engineer.
From the Town Engineer and raised curbing.
From the Town Engineer.
Also from the Town Engineer.
Got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? One, two, three, four. Am I seated, Jane?
Um, yes.
Jane, you're seated for this vote?
Lady, yes.
Quinn, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Martin, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Okay. Next up, seventy-five Main Street, ninety-day extension request.
Uh, motion to grant a ninety-day extension on application SDP dash two zero one five dash oh one, file one one three.
Need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and got a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Call the roll. Starting with Commissioner Flader.
Flader, yes.
Quinn, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Martin, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Okay. Next up is meeting minutes, September seventeen, two thousand fifteen. Okay, so we can do O'Hara, Martin, Townsend. Okay, and Quinn. So Jane just abstained. Uh, so Chair will entertain a motion on the September seventeen minutes?
Motion to approve meeting minutes from the September seventeenth meeting.
Excuse me, Brian, were you, you were absent?
He listened to the tape.
I listened to the tape.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Sorry.
We got a motion. We got a second from Commissioner Townsend. Edits, changes, anything? Compliments to Mr. McCollum. Very nice minutes for your first go here with the Commission. Hearing no further edits, additions, changes. Call the roll, starting with Commissioner Flader.
Flader abstained.
Quinn?
Quinn, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Martin, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Okay, that takes care of the meeting minutes. Application deliberation, use change, CrossFit, Get On The Moon, four eighty-two, four eighty-four. Hadn't we already seated? Yes. Will, you put that on page two for me. Let's see who I've got. Because once we start deliberating, we've got to keep it that way. O'Hara, Martin, Townsend, Lindstrom.
And I listened to the tape, so.
Well, like.
I'd rather abstain, but move these guys in.
So I switched the alternate from Flader to Lindstrom. And we'll just have the four of us vote, because we don't, when you start deliberation, you keep who you have in deliberation, which is why Will is on page four putting the names.
Yep.
So Commissioner Porter will just be absent. Four votes is enough to make a determination, one way or another. All right. So Commissioners, you are currently in deliberation on this application. This is the one you had scheduled to be voted on the last meeting. Does anyone have any further deliberation?
No.
Or comments on the draft letter? Anybody, anybody? Going once, going twice. At this point, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept a special exception permit, SCP two thousand fifteen dash sixteen, file one five six seven A, CrossFit slash Kids On The Moon Bounce House, forty-two to four eighty-four Pepper Street, Assessor Map ninety-four, Lot seventeen, Industrial District two.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and I got a second. Any further discussion? All right.
To clarify, that motion was as, as drafted.
As drafted.
As drafted.
All right. Commissioner Lindstrom was the second. You had two nights of public hearing. You had an applicant that went back and made sure everything from the first approval was correct. You took public participation. You are re-outfitting an industrial building with a recreational use. Following the P O C D, renewing economic development. You didn't find any, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Any harm to traffic, et cetera. You spent a little extra time here on the parking, because you got some shared use and some uses that we don't specifically define. Anything else I should pop for, Will?
Well, you should just also note that the approval also includes, in regards to what you said, a, a use-specific parking standard of one point three off your parking spaces for the CrossFit use, which should there be changes in the tendency or the type of use or the intensity of that type, that use, that that would be by the Commission. And also you will be granting with this approval a twenty-two percent reduction in total requirement in parking based on the shared use between all the uses of the site, which include Gator, CrossFit and Kids On The Moon, based on differences in peak demand usage of those, those facilities.
All right. Anybody, anything else? Hearing nothing. Call the roll. Commissioner Lindstrom first?
Yes.
O'Hara, yes?
Martin, yes.
Townsend, yes.
All right. Folks, we take care of that one. That is approved. That takes care of application deliberations and determinations, because from tonight we have one hearing which is continued and one hearing which was withdrawn, the application. Eleven, nothing is scheduled under Regulation Review Amendment Work Session. Number twelve, there was a correspondence. Has Joe seen that?
Um, I don't know.
We should refer that over to Joe. I've read that and, you know, very often we get this sort of thing and folks who own businesses haven't contacted Joe, reviewed the regulations to even see what their options are. This is somebody who wants to, she wants to do some additional sandwich board signage.
This is actually, now that you say, you said, I didn't review it with Joe, but I did review it with Dawn in the office when this came in and she did it, mentioned to me that, that Joe was aware of this particular property or tenant and that they actually do take advantage of the programs allowed and in fact exceed what they're supposed to be doing.
That's true.
All right. I'm not familiar with what's going on at Clock Tower, but.
I think the biggest issue is what she says on the back part of it, which is that they don't really have any acre stores there. There is a lot if they can see.
Is that food store still there?
No.
And you know, if you don't have anchors drawing in, Mom and Topps have a hard time.
But they have a great big sign.
All right.
On the roadway.
Commissioners, anything to report?
I, I have a question. Um, I, I feel sorry for the people who sit here very often, like Mr. Henny Penny today. You know, he's had to sit through a whole bunch of stuff that he maybe wasn't interested in. And I, I just wonder if there's a way that we could maybe adjust our agenda slightly so that we can do the things that maybe will take only a couple of minutes. You know, is, is there a rule in stone that says we have to use this order?
I can set, I can set up the agenda any way I want and to your point, one of the things I asked Will, and I think we talked about it in the subcommittee a while back, and Will's getting to it, is a regulation that will allow something like a generator to be done administratively.
Oh, that could be, but there may be a time when we do.
Kathy, you're, you're, I'm sorry, you, you're talking about some of these things. There are, I know exactly what you're talking about. There have been several instances where people have sat here. And, you know, just on the whole discuss, on the whole topic of sitting here, we're sitting here. We're volunteers. I don't see any of you getting a paycheck. I asked Will to work on a regulation. The transformer from Monroe L. might fall under that. The Koopa work that we heard a couple of times might fall under that. This generator might fall under that. You know, we've, we've asked Will to do that and that speaks to what you're talking about. Administrative approvals, which you folks will have to weigh in on in the future as to what your comfort level is. Because, you know, if you go back to the history of the town of Monroe, there was too much administrative approval. Uh, and Will and Scott have both pointed out to me correctly that you don't want to give the town planner too much latitude, because then too much administrative approval is getting done.
And, and there probably are issues that we do need, have come before us, and if you're pretty much a no-brainer, and it's not going to take, you know, an hour and a half to do it, then, you know, we can kind of get rid of them quickly.
To your point, you know, very often when the, the town is coming before us, I try to get them first. Um, I've made that clear, that, you know, anytime there's a town application, let's try and get them in and out of here. But again, you know, folks, folks understand what this process is and that it does take time. You know, for the gas station here, if there was a big interest, though, that would have represented a lot of people who wanted to get to the meeting but didn't want to be here till ten o'clock. That's a, that's a major, that's a major...
That's a big, I'm surprised there wasn't more public here, but...
Okay.
Anyway.
Hopefully I've answered.
Yes.
Spoke to what you want. Anything else, folks?
Yes, um, at the September third meeting, um, the commission decided that I would write a letter to the first selectman requesting spreadsheet information regarding, uh, issues that have been handled by Jack Fracassini and the, um, whatever's on the outstanding list for Joe Chapman. Has anybody received an answer? No.
I haven't received anything, I do know that immediately after, um, the request, there was, there were vacations, uh, perhaps even a medical occurrence, um...
Well, it's been, it's been over six weeks.
Okay.
And, um... I think that maybe, I would like to propose doing an F O I to get the information, because I don't think we're going to get it any other way.
I agree with Karen.
Do we need to make a motion for that effect or something?
No, we just need to do it so everyone's on the same page, if you have, if you're, if you have a way to get it without it, by all means, but...
I don't know what the procedure is, that's what I'm asking.
Has, has anybody, has anybody asked, has anybody contacted Joe and Jack?
Yes, Steve sent an email, forwarded my email to Joe and Jack.
September third.
Whatever, the fourth, I think it was the fourth.
It, 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 in between there, then and here has...
And, and I sent a second email.
Okay.
Where I requested the information again, and I said, if it won't be provided to the commission, I would like to know the reason why.
Well...
And/or when we can expect to get it, I have not heard anything.
Okay.
That's what I'm looking for, is the matrix.
You, well, all right.
That, that had some accountability, right?
You were getting a matrix, which is a public document.
Right.
Of everyone's zoning issue that Joe was dealing with. We had a subsequent discussion to that, where the point was brought up, that that is a public document. So if Karen's got an issue, and Pat's got an issue, and Brian's got an issue, all the world can see it, and I think we discussed for a few minutes the fact that, A, it doesn't change Joe's doing of his job, and B, we might not want to be broadcasting everybody's business across the desk here to the whole world. Now, if you folks want to change back to that format, just let me know.
I, that's the whole purpose of this, I want, I want to see what's going on, I want to know what cases Jack has closed out, what are still pending, where, where, where all this process is, we have no idea. And I was looking at the Inland Wetlands, um, documents the other day, and in their agenda, they publish the violations, so they have addresses that are out in the public to see.
Where do they...
Any document that's in this building, somebody can get at the F O I where they ask for it. We are the commission, I don't understand why we can't get part of our job.
Again, you, you have...
It's on their, on their agenda, okay, okay, it's on the agenda.
Those are, those violations are on the agenda, they're, they're coming before the commission, so they're on the agenda.
What do you mean they're coming before?
Those aren't all the violations.
The violations are, are handled differently by Inland Wetlands, it's not the same thing.
What is it, well, Pat's talking about having it published.
The people actually come before the commission, so they're an agenda item.
Right. I'm not saying they're an agenda item, I'm saying, we as commissioners need to know what's going on. I mean, it's irresponsible of us not to know.
But that's, but that's the question that you dealt with differently a year ago, you went through, remember, you're taking Joe, you're taking Joe's administrative time, which is X, and you're saying, we want to take part of X and we want to get this sheet, so you get a sheet. And it shows that, you know, Jane's got too many chickens, and Kathy's got too many old cars, and et cetera, et cetera.
But that's not Karen's point, the point is...
No, she said specifically, she wants the sheet back.
She wants Jack's information, not Joe, Rose's information.
I watched, I watched that too, I watched that too.
That was, that was also, that was also requested, she wants to know what Jack has closed back.
What I want to see is the timeline, are, are, are these getting done in a timely fashion, are they being closed out in a timely fashion? Remember initially, when we got, when we got the, got the information, there were some back for years.
From Joe, yeah.
From, before Joe, from before Joe.
No, they weren't from Joe, they were from...
No, they were from a previous...
The sheet came from Joe, listing all the violations.
And that's what we're looking for, I'm looking for the sheet, so we have information, are things getting processed, are things getting closed out, or are they lagging behind like they did years ago? We have no way of knowing that.
We're definitely lagging behind.
Well...
I have a complaint myself, that's eighteen months old.
And also, I think the point is, if, if Jack is supposed to be taking action, if someone has directed him, if the procedure is, first you send a le, first you knock on the door, then you send a letter, and then you send a threatening letter, and then you send a fine and whatever, and if nothing results, and it ultimately gets turned over to Jack, what has he done to resolve the issue? I think that's what you're asking, that's what Karen is asking.
And I, I, and keeping a spreadsheet is just one way of documenting what anybody is doing, Jack, Joe, anybody.
The matrix may explain perfectly well why we're, why I'm waiting eighteen months, could have, there's far more important things, and I'm totally accepting of that, that's fine.
But if you don't know...
But if I don't know, it's a, I'm, now I'm not talking as a commissioner.
Yeah, no, I, it's a resident, yeah, no, I, I get it, I get it.
So how, so how do we initiate what Karen is requesting, a Freedom of Information request, how, what is...
You're, you're, you're the commission, you're not going to F O I your own town attorney who works for you.
Well, he's not answering us, and we're not getting information.
I'm not looking to do that, I'm looking to just ask for administrative time, Joe, sure.
No, no.
There's two different things.
There are now, there are now two things on the table, the matrix, I actually think that, and I'll talk to Joe when I, when I can next week, because I have something I have to do. I think he keeps the matrix, I think it's on, I think it's on his laptop, you want to see the matrix?
I would have printed out, I want to see it.
He would just email it to us.
No, no, it's, it's...
And I'm going to know where Jack stands.
It's going to go in your packet, and it's going to be up here on the desk, and if somebody wants to see it, it's going to happen at home too. So that, that takes care of the, the other. Now, as far as it, the thing is with Jack, now, one of the things that I do is have the conversations with Joe, with Jack, and Jack and Joe have conversations too. Now, there are things that Jack is involved with, um, some are major, that involve some very large cases that are still ongoing. Other things have been disposed of.
I, I want to know...
Can I finish?
Yes.
Because I know what you want. Walmart was disposed of, I told you it was disposed of, remember? So you know that Jack had disposed of that. There are other things that are ongoing. Garter Road is still ongoing, there's really nothing to report. There's another property which is, seems to be in a real mess that goes back a decade or more, that goes under the name of Strosky. And that is another one that Jack and Joe are involved in, and it's got, they're, they're involved outside of the commission, it's, it's not an applicant, it's not a residence, it's something people discovered, were actually involved with Newtown, um, you know, if you, if you want... I'm sorry, I kind of talk with some pauses, I'm not stopping, I'll, so, so he's involved with that, he's involved with Garter Road, um, told you about Walmart.
You're missing my point altogether.
No, no, you're, you're, I know, no, I know what your point is.
Hey, you are, no, you are, Pat.
I want him to write a quarterly report, to say this is what I did this quarter.
You want the town attorney to write a quarterly report?
Yeah, he works for us, I want to...
He documents his time by, you know, he, he bills hourly.
I don't care what he bills.
No, that's what I'm saying.
I don't care what he bills, I hope he makes a million dollars.
That's what I'm saying, but so...
I just want to know where we stand.
So his hourly rates show what he's working on.
But, but that brings me back to where you folks are, which is, are you expecting Jack to be involved in every violation in town?
No, only the ones Joe turns over, right, Karen?
Right, I want to, I want to make sure you know the ones that Joe turns over to Jack, I want to know whether they were started, and where they are now, and if they were closed out and when.
So the first question for Joe is, what is he turned over to Jack? Because remember...
I think that was on the report.
Remember?
It was.
Well...
It was on the report, I think.
On the matrix.
The matrix had yes, if there was something that was turned over to Jack. For the most part, you're asking Joe to try and resolve these issues.
No, but when he can't resolve them, he goes to the next step.
Right, I want to know what happened to Jack Fracassini, when it gets to Jack, the date it gets to Jack, and what's going on, and, and if it's closed out, I want the date that it was closed out.
And I don't know if Joe has sent anything over to Jack.
Oh, he has, I've spoken to Joe. Joe has spoken, has sent numerous things over to Jack, and he says, you know, they're with Jack, that's all he says, they're with Jack.
And it's out of his hands.
And it's out of his hands, they're turned over to Jack. I want to know, as a commissioner, and...
So that would be in the matrix.
Not just, that, that Joe turns it over to Jack. And we have no response from Jack, that's too much going on.
Well, the first thing to do is see that, you want to see the matrix.
Yeah.
Look, I'm...
I've asked for that, we have a...
No, it's September third, you sent an email, I understand.
Yes, and I followed up with another email, and we have gotten nothing back.
But I asked you if you followed up, you didn't?
I did, I sent another email.
When?
Want me to get it out of my phone?
No, no, I just, I, remember, I, I asked...
Where the last meeting was supposed to be, I think you sent the email, I still have the email.
So two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, so I am, I am willing to file an F O I because I want this information, and I feel like we're being stalled, ram-roaded, we're not getting it, for whatever reason, whatever's going on, I want to know.
I think our, our better approach is not to attack the guy, is just to say, look, this is a new protocol, and the protocol is quarterly or monthly, or not every meeting, because we meet twice a month, I don't want to know what he's doing every month, I want to know, I want to know, at some point, I want to be able to go to that matrix and say, this is where we are at this.
Right.
It's quarterly, probably, I mean, it's not something I need to see every, even month, I just want to know...
Well, I think the first question is have Jack print out the matrix, and then look at the matrix and see what he's turned over to, Joe, Joe, and then see what he's turned over to Jack, and then ask Jack where he is on the things that Joe says he turned over to.
That's basically what I'm asking, when I'm asking Jack for that information, Jack is non-responsive to this commission. I have not received an email, or a letter, or a note, or a phone call, and nobody else has either.
Jack may also have to have privileged concerns, if he's publishing things.
I don't necessarily...
Joe, I think, certainly, but...
I don't, I don't know if he's got a, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think any, I will, next week I will ask Jack and Joe and figure out where all this stuff is.
Jack's away, he just went away today.
Okay.
He's going...
So I'll start with Joe.
This is the problem, I keep getting, I keep hearing the excuse, Jack is on vacation, Jack is this, Jack is that.
I can, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Why don't you, representing the commission, send another email to Joe, simply asking him for an updated matrix report? Just, just leave it at that.
Do we want it monthly, do we want it every meeting?
I don't think you should do it, I think the commissioners should do it.
I said next week I will go find out from Joe and get the matrix.
Pat's got the, um, he's our chairman, and, and it shouldn't come, if Joe had to answer all of us individually, I think it would be very hectic.
I think so too, one matrix, print it out for everybody, and we're done deal. Would people like it?
I think once a month is enough.
I think once a month is very nice, too.
Once a month is good enough, I mean, we don't need every...[1736.84]